Get started this evening. Thank you all for joining us today for the November sixteenth Louisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann and because of COVID nineteen, our meetings being held electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, what you can do is raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button that you'll find at the bottom of the screen. Attendees who are calling in by phone can dial star nine and will see a raised hand appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge you and the city clerk on mute too, please tell us your name, your address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments, and if you'd like to speak of another topic, please just raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. Could we please have a roll call city clerk?
Mayor Stolzmann here. Mayor from Tim Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Councilmember Lay, it seems to be here quite yet. And our new member, councilmember Most.
Here.
Thank you, everyone, and I'm soon to be councilmember Most. We'll have swearing in coming very shortly. So if I could get a motion from someone for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The agenda is approved. That takes us to our public commentary tonight for items that don't appear on our agenda or for any items that appear on our consent agenda. If there are any members that would like to comment on an item that's not listed on our agenda or something that is on our consent agenda, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. Again, you'll have three minutes and just please tell us your name and address. And so first, we have Joshua Cooperman.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at two sixteen Griffith Street. I would like to make a comment related to one item on the consent agenda. In particular, the Cottonwood Park Playground Replacement Equipment. I would like to make one request for a change to the planned replacement equipment. In particular, I would like to request that you not include the poured-in-place rubber surface at the playground. Let me explain my reasoning for making that request. As a father and an environmentalist, I really quite dislike these poured-in-place rubber surfaces. You know, although it's great to recycle materials like tires, I don't think it's a very good idea to make playground surfaces out of recycled tires. Because especially in the sunlight, they off-gas a lot of VOCs and they smell pretty terrible. They also eventually degrade, especially when they're in the sunlight. And then they leave lots of little pieces of old tires littered all around the playground. And I don't know how you clean that up very easily. Anyway, that's my request. I apologize for bringing it at this moment. I attempted to raise this concern with the Parks and Public Landscaping Board. I sent a letter, but for some reason it was never included in any of their packets. And the most recent packet from that board at which they approved the the equipment did not include the details that said they would be including the rubber surface for part of the surface at the playground. So I didn't make a comment at that meeting. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on items on our consent agenda or items that are not on our agenda tonight? Seeing no other comments, that takes us to our consent agenda with councilmembers. What to pull? The Cottonwood Park project off, just so staff can tell us a little bit about the project. And we can ask questions. I'm seeing some head nodding on that, and so we will go ahead and pull item J approval of contract amendment for project-specific design and construction services for Cottonwood Park Playground Replacement Project off of the consent agenda, and we'll put it right after the oaths of office. So we'll put it as sort of like between six and seven. So we'll just call it Roman numeral two, and it's going to take place between item six and seven on the agenda. Any other discussion of the consent agenda? Could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Motion.
There's a motion from Mayor from Tim Maloney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from councilmember Brown. Thank you. And so the motions to prove the consent agenda as amended by removing item J, just so we can discuss that on our regular agenda. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries, and that takes us to our council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Any council pertinent comments tonight? I just wanted to thank the staff and the businesses in downtown for the conversion to the winter arrangement. It looks really beautiful with the holiday lights up and the outdoor dining in place now is getting jazzy, so everybody should go check it out if they haven't had a chance to see that yet. Councilmember Lay.
Just wanted to welcome Maxine to the dais, so to speak, and Kyle Brown has gotten elected in his own right. So welcome back.
Thanks, councilmember Lay. And so that is a great segue into our first agenda item. I'm very happy to introduce our municipal judge, Judge Thrower. Judge Thrower is going to do the swearing-in ceremony for us tonight, and judge, when we're done with the ceremony, we're going to take a quick break and hopefully you found a little tart on your front porch for your enjoyment for that portion of the meeting. And so it's my great pleasure to turn it over to Judge Thrower to swear in these great councilmembers and take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, councilmembers. We'll start with Chris Lay. Councilmember Lay, are you ready?
I am indeed.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Chris Lay.
I, Chris Lay.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the city of Louisville, Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the city of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties of Office of City Council, Ward One.
And faithfully perform the duties of City Council, Ward One.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, councilmember Lay.
Thank you.
Oh, clap.
Next, Carolyn Maxine Most. Are you ready?
Uh, we'll see. My auditory recall skills are weak, so this could be a challenge, but.
I'll help you. I'll help you alone, I promise. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Carolyn Maxine Most.
I, Carolyn Maxine Most.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter.
Of the city of Louisville, Colorado.
Of the city of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Council, Ward Two.
Of the Office of City Council, Ward Two.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, councilmember Most.
Thank you.
Kyle Brown, are you ready, sir?
I am, Judge. Thank you. You know, after, this is the third time in two years I've been sworn in, so you'd think I'd have it memorized by now, right?
Well, I'll let you take it away if you'd like. All right. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Kyle Brown.
I, Kyle Brown.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The ordinances and Home Rule Charter of the city of Louisville, Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the city of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Council, Ward Three.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Council, Ward Three.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, councilmember Brown. Congratulations to all. Thanks for allowing me to be here this evening. It's a pleasure as always, and thank you, Mayor, for the delivery. Much appreciated.
Thank you. So now, everyone, I just want to say thank you very much to the councilmembers for running and the other candidates for running as well. It's a big commitment to run for public office. And the community has selected a great slate of people to serve. I also want to thank the family members of the councilmembers who have been selected, just because it does take away from family time and other commitments that you could be spending. So I appreciate all of your endeavors in public service and look forward to serving with everyone. Everyone should have a tart or some cake or something to enjoy. So it is a tradition that normally, in normal times, we would take a brief recess and go out into the lobby outside of city council chambers and have a piece of cake and a cup of coffee. And since we're doing this virtually, we still need to have that time to celebrate. It's a great, it's really a great occasion to have been elected. So we're all going to just take a brief recess, but remain on camera and enjoy a brief treat with one another. So please take this time to enjoy your treat and feel free to unmute yourself. We'll get back started into our business in about five minutes at six eleven, but please feel free to enjoy the camaraderie for a moment and celebrate the new councilmembers.
And you go get a fork.
That's what fingers are for. Come on.
I did actually just look at him like I can probably just take bites.
One bite, yes.
I probably need a napkin or something. I'll be right.
All right. Well, congratulations, Maxine, and congratulations, Chris. Speaking of being sworn in and three times in two years, I think you have a similar experience there, so.
I think Chris does have some experience.
I'll propose a toast to the three members as well.
Hmm.
So congratulations and welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, councilmember Fahy.
Last year, a squirrel ate my cake, so I'm pretty excited to be able to eat my own cake.
A squirrel ate your cake?
Did it really?
Wow. The squirrel's in your house, Dennis?
No. I left it on his porch last year.
Yeah. And I was sitting here at my desk, and then I noticed the squirrel dragging a container of cake across my driveway. It's like, oh, I wonder what that is.
That's a, that's a tough squirrel right there.
Ashley brought one by this afternoon, and so I hate that one. And I'm like, oh, so now this is my second. She brought me a second one. So all my second tart. Like, you can't give me a tart in the middle afternoon. I'm like, you know, oh, don't just, here, don't eat this. I'm like, seriously? I'm with you, Maxine. I'm like, I need the sugar.
This is not dog fare.
Oh, my God. This one is chocolate.
I did really disturb councilmember Lay's dog when I went by the house because I was trying to find a piece of paper to leave a little sticky note on it, so he would know what this was on his porch. And his dog did not like that I was there lingering on the porch for so long.
He is ten pounds of fierce.
That's what I was saying.
Ten pounds, wow. It's always the small ones. Yeah, right.
I got surprised at Baird eggs. I was sitting, sitting outside having lunch with my wife and up walked the mayor with two tarts.
And you managed to not eat them until now?
Oh, yeah, no.
More willpower than I do.
I can't, I don't know about my wife. She may have eaten hers.
Well, cheers to my, with my last bite.
They are delicious. Yes.
They are very good.
Where do these come from, Ashley?
An unknown source. And disclosed.
And disclosed? I was wondering if that was one of our fine establishments in Louisville.
I hope it isn't.
It is a Boulder County bakery.
All right, well, that's fine. Now I'm gonna need milk. It'd be awesome.
Come around and deliver milk to everybody?
So I know.
I'll take a double espresso.
There's a story in Boulder. There were a couple councilmembers that had to recuse themselves. And so what they did in the period of time when they were recused from some long agenda items is deliver ice cream to all the other councilmembers' houses because they meetings. So that seemed like a nice idea.
Keep that in back of our minds for future reference.
I might start recusing myself on some of the longer agenda items.
I'm okay with that, Dennis.
Arguments here. As long as I had ice.
No, I'm gonna bring you like a half dozen flies.
Oh, wow.
Sounds like dead flies from his leg.
That would be better.
That the audience, just because this is recorded and live on television, just for context for everyone else, both of them fly fish. That's the context of that.
That's a good point, yeah.
I was actually thinking. Yeah, since we're gonna be spending a lot of quality time on Friday together, Dennis, I was thinking about like, I should, I should buy, I should get some, or you know, bring some flies. That would be a good opportunity to give me, give him some flies. Put together a little box for you.
Your hands busy while, you know, all this other stuff is going on.
Well, it looks, it looks like everyone's about done chewing, so if anyone else wants to make any other congratulatory comments or.
I just want to say that I'm excited to be here and a little bit nervous and, you know, a little kind of wide-eyed because it's a lot coming at me, but I'm really, I'm really looking forward to learning what I need to learn to be really good at this position, and I hope that you will all help me along and, you know, have a little understanding of my coming up to speed time, because I'm sure you're all familiar with the process.
Thank you very much. Anything else on this agenda from folks? All right, well, one last congratulations, and thank you all for putting yourselves out there and for committing to the community. Thank you. And so next, we have what we've put in as Roman numeral two. Just a quick update. And it's the agenda item called Approval of Contract Amendment for Specific Design and Construction Services for Cottonwood Park Playground Replacement Project. I saw Nathan Mosley was on, and I wondered, Nathan, if you could just tell us a little bit about specifically the poured-in-place rubber that was described in public comment.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor and City Council. Nathan Mosley, Director of Parks, Recreation and Open Space. Can everybody hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'm just gonna share a screen from the packet. Just, I think it'll help illustrate what we've got going on. So can you see?
Yes, we can.
So this is the outline of the playground areas at Cottonwood Park. And so the beige areas that you see is what's called engineered wood fiber. So it's basically wood chips that go through tumblers in order to take the edges off. You don't get splinters and those sort of things. And then this small portion kind of in the, in the bottom corner that's charcoal colored is the poured-in-place that the gentleman is referring to. And it wasn't included in the original design concepts because it is a little bit more expensive than, than the engineered wood fiber. But through the process of going to the Parks and Public Landscaping Board, listening to residents when we did the onsite visit at the park and then getting feedback through the online, we wanted to try to provide some accessible play features at the playground. And the ramp that goes up from this poured-in-place is wheelchair accessible and gets children over to the play feature that has the two gray or the green kind of semicircles on it. And so that piece of equipment is wheelchair accessible. And it's kind of like a rocking feature. So that's the reason why when we went back through the design and picked the final pieces, we did put a little bit of poured-in-place at this location because with it being within the play surface, we wouldn't want to do something like concrete. But we wanted something that was ADA accessible, and you know, there was very little of it that we included. And so that's, that's why we haven't included at this point. We could certainly talk to the designer and see if there's any other options that might be wheelchair accessible that don't have those same concerns, but we have used poured-in-place in several of our parks. And it's pretty standard in the playground industry just to provide some additional surfaces for kids to play on. And again, it is ADA accessible.
Thanks, Director Mosley. And so in this rendering, only that circle or I guess partial circle in the bottom corner is the poured-in-place, and the rest of it does not have any?
Correct. That's the only place on the entire playground that has poured-in-place. The rest is either sand or engineered wood fiber.
Thank you. And then I don't know if you know enough about the details of it, but could you comment at all about the process and public comments going to the Parks Board? And if there's just a way to improve that going forward?
Yeah, I'm not sure why that, his email did not get included in the packet. The original, when we went to the Parks and Public Landscaping Board in October, we showed them three different options of playground equipment. So there was post and deck, then there were two more that were kind of wood-based and more whimsical in nature. And so what we were really trying to get feedback on from the board was not the specific components, but rather the, the type of equipment that we would have in place. And then during the onsite public meeting and then the survey that we did, we really tried to get more feedback on the actual pieces of equipment. And that's where we heard about the, the desire for some accessible pieces at the playground. And then again, in order to make this one wheelchair and ADA accessible, the, the designer did put in the small amount of poured-in-place, but we, we never really talked about the, the surface during that conversation, but we'll certainly follow up and make sure that any emails that we receive will be included in future packets for board consideration.
Thank you, Director Mosley. Any other councilmember questions on this agenda item? I'll turn it over to the members of the public. Any members of the public care to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll take it back over to councilmembers for discussion and motions. Any councilmember discussion on this topic? Councilmember Fahy.
I just want to say that I was at the Cottonwood Park Public Outreach Event. And I did hear the several people questioning why there wasn't any ADA accessible equipment. And that is why this decision was made to make this ADA accessible. I don't know if there's a better surface, but I, I would be willing to go with this little circle in order to have ADA if there isn't anything, I guess, greener as another option. But I do think it's important to have some of the equipment available for handicapped children.
Thanks, councilmember Fahy. And I saw a lot of head nodding when you were speaking. Director Mosley, would it be possible for us to just give some feedback that if there is an alternative that accomplishes this without the concerns around off-gassing and and the concerns that were brought forward by Mr. Cooperman, that you would pursue those options? Is that possible at this juncture, or do we really need to just finalize it where it is?
No, we can definitely talk to the designer. The main thing we want to do with the approval tonight is start ordering the equipment. Surface is something that we can discuss with them. And definitely, if there's a greener option out there, we can certainly include that, but we just want to get the equipment ordered because of, you know, lag time and actually producing it and getting it onsite for installation.
Thank you very much. So it seems like we may be tracking in that direction, and it doesn't need to come back to council after that, but if you could look into that, that would be great. And I just want to thank you for including the zip line. A lot of Girl Scouts and community members have made it clear that that's important.
Parents, the Girl Scouts.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Everybody, everybody, little kids, big kids, the adults want the zip line.
That's right, Alan. That's exactly it. Mayor Proton Maloney.
I was wondering who was talking. Well, based upon the, the assurance from the Parks Director about looking into the surface and leaving us to those concerns, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract amendment for the project-specific design and construction services at Cottonwood Park Playground Replacement Project. That's too many words, but.
Thank you, Mayor Brett Tumali. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, councilmember Fahy. Any discussion of the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries, and that takes us to item number seven, our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just a couple things. First, I would like to welcome councilmember Most and welcome back councilmembers Brown and Lay. Just on behalf of City Manager's Office and all the city employees, we look forward to working with you and continue to work with you moving forward. I also just want to remind the community that on this Thursday, we will be hosting an open house with the city manager candidates, the four finalists for the city manager recruitment process, and that will be at 5:30 PM at the REC Center this Thursday, November eighteenth. And if you're not able to come in person and you would like to provide comments, there's some videos online that you can review and provide feedback through a form that can be submitted. Just wanted to make everyone aware. In addition, staff are invited to that as well if they'd like to meet the candidates too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, City Manager Davis. And that takes us to our regular business this evening.
Mr. Stolzmann, might I, we can just briefly, sorry. The form online for submitting comments is not available quite yet, so I don't want to even rush into the website to look at the videos. It will be up. I'm hoping by the end of tomorrow afternoon, and it'll be open all day Thursday and Friday morning for residents to submit comments, but it's not quite there yet.
Thank you. And city clerk, is, are the videos posted at this point?
The videos are up and the resumes are up, yeah.
Excellent. Excellent. So by, so everybody can get started watching those videos and reading the resumes, and then please provide us your feedback starting tomorrow evening. Thank you very much. And so with that, we'll move to regular business, and I'll plug my computer in because I just noticed it's not plugged in and I'm running out of battery. So we are on resolution number eighty-six, series twenty-twenty-one, a resolution approving a planned unit development to allow an accessory structure in the rear of the property at nine forty Main Street. So Kim Bauer, our city planner, is going to take us through this tonight. Hi, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see that okay, just to make sure?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. So good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council, and congratulations to those sworn in this evening. My name is Kim Bauer, and I'm the Historic Preservation Planner in the Planning and Building Department, and I have before you this evening a request for a planned unit development at nine forty Main Street. For confirmation of notice, the item was properly noticed per municipal code. In the image before you, the subject property is located within the yellow outline on the east side of Main Street, right there at the corner of South and Main. The PUD proposal before you this evening is requesting the approval to allow an accessory structure in the rear of the property. For a little bit of background, because all development in Louisville, with the exception of residential, residential development up to six units and and less than an acre requires approval of a PUD, the construction of this accessory structure would therefore require approval of a PUD. There was a previously approved PUD for this property from two thousand and seven, but the, the construction never commenced and it also has since expired. The proposed accessory structure is a twelve-foot by twenty-four-foot rectangular-shaped structure with a shed roof design, clad in horizontal lap siding, painted to match the existing primary structure. The proposed accessory structure would not require any additional water or sewer lines or utilities, pardon me, and only require electrification for the office use proposed for the floorpan of the interior. The structure itself would serve as just extra office space to the existing tenant of the primary structure, which you can see there at the picture before you. This slide shows the proposed site plan as it would look with the two hundred and eighty-eight square foot accessory structure located in the rear of the property. And as you can see, the proposed structure would be detached from the existing structure. So if you can kind of see my mouth circling where it would be, we do have the primary structure there on the left-hand side of this, and then some existing accessory structures as well. This slide, this slide is an image of the sightline from Main Street. On the top there, showing the scale of the proposed accessory structure in context of the existing structures. The picture at the bottom of the slide is taken along South Street, looking west-southwest at the rear of the property, just to provide a little more context where the, where the accessory structure is proposed to be placed. The proposed, the PUD is subject to standards and policies in the design handbook for downtown Louisville and the downtown Louisville. Um the proposed uh the P U D is subject to standards and policies in the Design Handbook for Downtown Louisville and the Downtown Louisville Framework Plan and the Yolk uh Yard and Bulk Standards for the C C Zone District. Um staff finds that the application complies with all applicable standards and policies, and no waivers are requested this evening. And to finish, uh staff does recommend approval of resolution eighty-six, series twenty-twenty-one, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so I'll take it to public comments on this agenda topic. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment on this topic this evening? And just a reminder, you can dial star nine if you've dialed in by phone to raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll take it back over for council questions and comments. Any council questions or comments? I'd just like to thank our city planner, Kim Bauer. Um that was a very complete staff report in the packet. Very pleasurable to read.
Thank you very much.
Any other council comments or questions or motions? Councilmember Fahey.
I will move to approve resolution number eighty-six, series twenty-twenty-one, a resolution approving a P U D to allow an accessory structure in the rear of the property at nine forty Main Street.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Um I find that I I agree with the staff analysis that the. The application meets the criteria like out in our code and meets the downtown design handbook and criteria. I do have one question for you, Kim. Um that is tangential to the application, and I know this is what's before us tonight, and I'm supportive of what's before us tonight, but if um this property were to come forward. Or if it were landmarked, uh or if they had wanted to landmark, would this type of structure be eligible for some of the complimentary incentive bonus uh money? And did you discuss that with the applicant?
That's an excellent question. So because it's an accessory structure, typically it wouldn't be landmarked the way the primary structure would, so the historic structure itself would. So um it wouldn't be associated in that way. There are, you know, we do have the new construction grants, but typically. New construction grants as part of the H P F Fund would be um accessible only to those doing in addition directly attached to the primary structure. So it'd also be differentiated in that way. To clarify, though, this addition, this shed addition, wouldn't affect the property's ability to be landmarked. So we would look at other certain criteria, and this being a detached structure, um we would obviously, it's on the it's on the property, but it wouldn't take away from the. The primary structure's ability to be landmarked or reviewed for landmarking.
So and and just to sort of complete my understanding of the grants and how they work, there is some grant money that's that's just given to a person as like a landmarking bonus, so that type of money could be used for this?
It's true. So that's a great point. So if let's say the property, the primary structure they went through and they were landmarked, folks get a five thousand dollar incentive bonus just for landmarking, and that doesn't have any um particular regulations or matching components tied to it. So. That five thousand dollars could be potentially used for something like the new structure or other things on the property, whereas, you know, the the um preservation funds or new construction funds have certain requirements in which they must be used in certain ways. Did I explain that okay or clearly? Okay?
Yes, thank you. And just the last question on the commercial properties, what's the what's the cap that we, I mean, I know there's extraordinary circumstance, and we can go beyond the cap, but what's the traditional cap on the? Commercial properties?
And that's true. I I just realized I misspoke. So for residential properties, it's a five thousand dollar landmarking incentive bonus, and for commercial properties, it's fifty. So thank you for misspeak uh for for making me realize I misspoke there. And then for the um. For the max of the commercial grant funds, I'm also, I would have to double check, but I believe it's um sorry, I have the more of the residential ones memorized, but I can double check and let you know, but um typically, yes, they would, if there's extraordinary circumstances, they could go beyond that based on. Any sort of requirements that we may see in historic structure assessment that would open them up to going beyond the, you know, the limitation standard for commercial.
Okay. And thank you, Kim. I know this isn't exactly what's in front of us, but given, you know, the staff report and the historic nature of the property, I just wondered what types of incentives would be available to the applicant. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I I liked your tangential questions. Um Planner Bauer, I I want to tell you, when I was going through this, I went through the presentation, and I started making a list of questions. And then I read the staff report, and you answered all of my questions. So I want to compliment your report as well, just like the mayor did. So thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem.
Hi, Councilmember Fahey.
Um I'll also add my thanks to Kim. I think this was a wonderful report. Um my question, or I guess comment, is could you clarify? Or confirm that this, because it's only electricity and it's it's uh being approved as an office space? This would not be allowed as an A D U. As an accessory dwelling unit, you couldn't live in this. There's no water, there's no sewer. Is that right?
That's correct, yes. And so this would just be for extra meeting space or, you know, office space for the for the existing tenant. It wouldn't be additional, you know, commercial space and right. It couldn't be used as an A D U as those wouldn't be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, I pulled up the the numbers. Uh so for commercial properties, they would get um, there's the fifty thousand dollar landmark incentive bonus, as I mentioned, and then the maximum for preservation grants is a hundred and fifty thousand for commercial properties, and then new construction grants are seventy-five thousand. And again, those we have separate stipulations where the incentive bonus would just be the bonus for landmarking. So sorry, I didn't have that offhand. I wanted to make sure I got the numbers right.
Thank you. Thank you for the quick look up. I really appreciate that fast work. Thanks, Kim. Any other discussion of the motion or any other questions on this one from folks? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the city clerk for a roll call, so.
Sorry. Had all the time in the world, and you caught me off guard.
Sorry about that.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries, and that takes us to our next order of business tonight, which is resolution number eighty-seven, series twenty-twenty-one. A resolution approving a final planned unit development and special review use to allow a car wash and associated site improvements on Lot Three, Saint Louis Parish and Boulder Innovation Campus. I'll open the public hearing and ask council members if there are any disclosures this evening. Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Lisa Ritchie, our planning director. And you're on mute.
Thank you, Mayor. City council, good evening, everyone. Um. Can you all see this screen? I'm going to switch it over here to slideshow. Can you all see the screen? Okay?
Great. Yeah, and it's just not quite in full screen just yet. There you go.
Hopefully now. Okay. All right. So yeah, tonight you're here to consider resolution eighty-seven to approve a P U D to allow a car wash in an S R U. The application was properly noticed per the municipal code. Um you all are probably getting quite familiar with this property by now, as we've seen a number of applications over the past years, but this is part of a um, this is a lot that was recently plotted within the Saint Louis Parish property um near ninety-sixth and Dillon. Again, collectively, the overall site is roughly fifty-one acres. The second G D P amendment approved in twenty-twenty amended uses and development standards, uh P U D, S R U, and plat. Was approved um in twenty-twenty that authorized the construction of one of the industrial buildings in a seven-eleven convenience store and fueling station. And then uh second P U D and plat was approved more recently to allow the construction of one additional industrial building and created a few more pad sites. Um and so for a little bit of context to orient yourself where this subject property is this evening that we're talking about, so this, the first P U D. Authorized construction of the industrial building that if you've driven down Ninety-Sixth Street recently, you're seeing that going up. That's certainly um quite a change out there on that lot. The seven-eleven was approved. That's shown. It's not yet under construction. And then tonight, we're talking about the middle pad site of those three um on that first P U D. So that's a little bit of context. Um and shown before you here are the site plan and then a building elevation as you would see it as you're approaching um toward the south, uh looking east along Ninety-Sixth Street. So that's a representative of the architecture here for you. But generally, um this is a six-bay drive-in car wash. Um the you can see um. The access is entirely from the private drive, the internal private drive network. So there's no new access points out on Ninety-Sixth Street uh provided to this property. It's accessed entirely from that internal street network. Uh the orientation of the building faces west, and so the vehicles entering the car wash were are all going to be approaching from the west side and driving in toward the east. Um there are three automatic bays um that's separated by an equipment room and then three self-service bays. Additionally, they plan kind of a dog wash, uh pet wash rooms on the far southern side of the site. Um and then parking and vacuum stations are further to the south. And so um really then from an access point, again, they can enter in um. In two different points off of the access of the private north-south drive um with shared access on the adjacent lots, and then they'll be kind of through access as well for folks who, you know. Get gas at the carwa- or car station or charge their electric vehicle and then can access the car wash that way. Um so when we look at this for compliance, first of all, we make sure it's compliant with the G D P that was recently approved. Within the G D P, there's a fifty-five-foot building setback, thirty-foot parking setback, building height requirements, enhanced landscaping along South Ninety-Sixth, as well as the dark sky lighting um requirement. This P U D complies with all of those provisions within the G D P. Additionally, for review against the C D D S G, which is the overlying um design standards, it's compliant with that um with those standards as well. I do have the landscape plan pulled up for you here, and you'll probably notice in the packet there was much discussion from Planning Commission and a condition of approval. Um that staff had included when this application went to Planning Commission. And so essentially. Um the rationale for that is within the C D D S G, there's a standard that for drive-through uses, which staff reviewed this against the uses for a drive-through use because of the stacking lanes. Um there's a standard that either um the site is. That the drive-through lanes are not located between the street and the building, which they are in this case, but if they are, then those drive-through stacking lanes are effectively screened. And so staff, you know, worked with the applicant quite a bit. We talked about a number of options. But ultimately landed on um some enhanced screening through additional evergreens that were included within this landscape area here. And so the application was amended. To enhance it with additional evergreens to provide year-round screening rather than just deciduous shrubs which lose their leaves in the winter. Um we were trying to balance the rural character of the area for the property across the street and not have it be too um. Not have it be too intensive a landscape screening when you are factoring that rural character, as well as to provide some continuity and landscape design with the seven-eleven to the south and to the future lot on the north. We did talk about, you know, one option that could be a little more effective is actually like a masonry or brick screen wall that's maybe three or four feet high. Um you see those more in urban types environments in this type of circumstance that can really be effective at screening those parking and drive-through areas. But really, um you know, we talked extensively with Planning Commission, and and this is where collectively the lady landed and staff thought was a good. A good means and a good tool. Um so I just want to provide the context for that. Um in the G D P, it does have that thirty-foot buffer requirement for parking. Um and just for context, the edge of this drive aisle here is roughly at that thirty feet. So I think it's just inside that thirty feet. So there is no paving within the thirty-foot parking setback. So when we look at the special review use, which within the G D P, car washes are set forth as requiring a special review, uh we look at the code for approval. Um staff finds that this particular use is consistent with a rural context area for auto-oriented uses and development patterns. This use will contribute to the economic prosperity of the city. Staff finds that the site design is compatible. Uh my apologies, this is carryover from Planning Commission. Um with no condition required and no waivers are required for this portion of the P U D, um as well as it meets all the criteria in the Louisville Municipal Code. And so with that, we're recommending approval of this application as submitted. Happy to answer any questions. And the applicant does have a brief presentation if you all are interested. In that, or as well, just answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. The applicant's welcome to make a presentation if they'd like to.
Good evening. Can you hear me? It looks like you can.
Yes.
Great. Um good evening. My name is Megan Chronicfeld. I'm with United Properties. Um as Lisa mentioned, you are probably very familiar with this. This project and might recognize me from um some previous council meetings uh where we presented on the overall development. So um thank you for the opportunity to present here again, but. Um I was involved with the overall entitlement process, which established that G D P and then the the subsequent subsequent P U D. Uh approvals for the industrial buildings and the seven-eleven as well. Um we are just really excited to. Uh have a local business group here, Justin and Megan, who are on the screen, and they'll they'll present to you in a minute here, but. Um we're we're super excited to have them interested in this property. And and Justin, I don't know if you can share your screen here um as well, but um.
Sure. That real quick shares. And it's going to be.
Yeah, that's right. Awesome. There we go. Um and if you can roll to the next slide. It just shows the the overall development here um with the two industrial buildings, uh the the retail pads along the front. Um of Ninety-Sixth as well. And then um it just gives you some context as to what what has already been approved, and then how this kind of fits into the overall development. But we're really excited about this. Um car wash and pet wash that that Justin and Megan will give you a lot more information on um here moving forward. But one thing I do want to call out that I think Lisa did a a great job of of um summarizing just that it's consistent with. The G D P amendment that was previously approved. And um one other item here is just the landscape and the set the setback uh that was existing uh through that G D P amendment, but. Uh what's proposed here tonight actually matches um the seven-eleven uh landscape that was previously approved as well um in terms of the intent and the the um. The overall landscape plan there. So there's some significant screening and and buffering there, but we're really excited um to have Justin and Megan uh local business owners and and uh provide this amenity to. Our industrial tenants, but also just the local community. So uh with that, I'll turn it over to them, and I'm here to answer any questions on the overall development as well, moving forward.
Thanks, Megan. And can everyone hear us? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Great. Well, first of all, if we want to say congrats, you know, to the new council members and uh, you know, thanks for everyone in your time tonight. Uh we're super excited to introduce the car wash to you, so I'll let Meg it Megan take it from here.
Yeah, we just um obviously uh Lisa Ritchie did a great job kind of giving you guys a overview, so a lot of this is um we'll skip over, but just kind of wanted to go over who we are and why we picked um Louisville. Uh for this site and kind of how this would benefit the community um and some stuff around that. So you can go to the next one. Um yeah, so we're, I'm Megan, and this is my husband, Justin. Uh we currently co-own and operate Laser Cycle USA, which is right in the Colorado Technology Center. Um we've been around since nineteen ninety-one. Uh it's a family business. And so it's really convenient uh to the site, which is why we really like this uh site. So we're right here all the time. Um I'm a native to Colorado, uh born and raised, went to school at C U Boulder. Uh and we've really grown to love and appreciate Louisville. We're always going out to Waterloo and all the uh local establishments in Louisville. Would love to buy a house in Louisville moving forward. So we're really looking forward to helping out um potentially the community with this wash. Um and you know, we have a really deep-rooted connection to Louisville. My aunt lives in downtown Louisville, and then my uh grandpa and grandma and mom um had been in Louisville for fifty years. So. Really excited to, you know, continue to hopefully improve the city with this uh car and pet wash.
So here on the slide, you can see kind of the prior to the development on the left-hand side. Um to the right, we have an aerial view of the wash to the top right, and then seven-eleven is down below that to kind of give you a quick snapshot of what that's going to look like. Um the next one. Um so this is kind of enhanced landscaping. Lisa went over some of this as well. Um you know, the buffers, uh obviously screening the stacking lanes. So we'll actually move on to the next slide, which will explain a little bit better. So here's our here are some of the slides. Um you can kind of see visual screening from the street, screening from the street to meet all obviously all the requirements. Uh we agree to staff's recommendation. You know, to put the evergreens in place for more year-round coverage. And obviously, you can see the front elevation. Obviously, some of you may, you know, mistake this for Garden of the Gods or Botanical Gardens. But we promise there is a car wash behind the landscape buffer. So. Uh that's the front elevation. We have the northbound perspective to the right top and then the the southbound to the right bottom. And so here we have visuals of the building. So we feel like um we wanted to really point this out. You know, we have a really nice rustic, modern charm of the building. You know, ties in with Colorado and the Louisville community feel special when entering the city as a gateway. Uh we went over and beyond to make sure it's, this is not your ordinary. We went over and beyond to make sure it's, this is not your ordinary car wash, but has a great architectural design as well. And then notice boulders to the north side of the building per staff suggestion. And then, you know, this goes to council member Lay. You know, we're excited for you to bring your dog to the, to the dog wash, because we're going to have two self-serve dog washes, a pet release station, you know, bike racks, bench seating, and with the addition of two dog washes, we know this will be a huge community benefit as there's not a self-serve pet wash in the area, especially at a car wash, you know, for residents to bathe their pets. So this will give residents a safe, private and clean area to do so, especially for animals that don't like to visit Petsmart or other pet salons such as our pets. They're really anxious when they have to go into a large store. This is just a quick snapshot of meeting dark sky requirements and the GDP condition of approval. And then here, just one thing to point out, sustainability, we have a, actually a really nice recycling system. So 60 to 70% of the water is reclaimed. So clean and reused in return will use less water than a typical car wash and save natural resources because of the reuse of water during a wash. You know, this reduces the amount of fresh water your car is using and reduces the amount of waste you are releasing to the environment. A couple of other things that we wanted to point out, the concrete block is locally manufactured and created within local materials. The membrane and the roofing will have a high abido, reducing the heat island effect. And the concrete for, you know, dry saw wax and particle will have a high abido, reducing the heat island effect as well. And then the panels on the roof are 100% recyclable, the metal sections. And then, of course, the dog wash that are located on the south side of the building to optimize daylight into those particular spaces. And of course, bicycle racks are provided to promote and, you know, another mode of transportation to the dog wash. You know, community benefits essentially consistent property tax as well as a needed service we feel in the area. And of course, it provides vehicle and animal cleaning amenities for surrounding residents in the Colorado Tech Center and workers. So the facility will also provide these services along the major road connecting for citizens leaving and entering the city of Louisville. And that's pretty much it from us, and we're super excited to present this to you and, and hopefully move forward.
Thank you for your presentation. And so with that, we will turn it to members of the public. This is your opportunity for public comments on this agenda topic this evening. If any members would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. And then again, if you'll just please tell us your name, your address, and then tell us what you'd like to tell us. First in the queue, we have Sherri Summer.
Thank you very much. I'm Sherri Summer, Knighton South Polisay Court. Thank you for the presentation. As always, the planning department has done a fabulous job. I have three concerns that I'd like to raise. One is the definition of rural context solely as being auto-oriented uses and development patterns. And secondly, the contextualization of this development as being appropriate in relation to the 7-Eleven and the newly approved office building. That is just a microcosm of the context it is in. We need to look at the whole area, and I've heard many outraged people talking about the current development that's going up at that site. And I don't think they'll be happy about hearing even more a car wash at this site. Secondly, I'd like to contest the idea that, while I think this is a fine project, I don't think it's quite accurate to say that we don't have anything like this in Louisville. We have a self-service dog wash at Black Paw, McCaslin and Cherry. We also have a car wash around that area, Dahlia and Cherry. We have a speedy sparkle, I believe, car wash in the north end on South Boulder Road. And so I don't know that there's one more thing needed when all of those areas are five-minute drive away. I'd like you really to consider that this is the southeast gateway to Louisville. We need to preserve the rural character. That's in the comprehensive plan. And rural character, as in the opinion of most people, and I think as defined by the comprehensive plan, is not car washes, 7-Elevens, and more and more buildings. I really hope that City Council will not approve this tonight, forever actually. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have RJ Harrington.
Good evening, Council. RJ Harrington, 457 East Rain Tree Court, bringing you greetings from Summit County this evening. The 70 has been closed for much of the day. I was up doing business today and am joining remotely from my cousin-in-law's house in Silverthorne. Planner Ritchie mentioned an EV charging station. I don't see that as part of this PUD, so I'm trusting that she was referencing the EV charging station that council suggested and required the 7-Eleven to add. And also, I'm really encouraged by the water reuse and recycling of water on-site. But ultimately, I have to wonder, where's the raw water going to come from? Is there a water right that was traditionally associated with this property? Or is this water that is going to be coming from the city's municipal water supply? The reason I bring that up is multifold. A, the climate crisis. B, our region is suffering through a significant drought. Evidenced by C, me being up here in Summit County and driving by the Dillon Reservoir, which you can walk now to many of the islands. Obviously, it is pre-snow season, so hopefully the reservoir reloads with some better snowpack this season. But that remains to be seen. So ultimately, those questions around sustainability, around water supply, and water use and reuse are where I would take my focus this evening. And again, as always, I appreciate council's service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Tamar.
Hi. This is Tamar France from 691 West Street. And I want to echo a little bit of what Sherri may have said already about the rural context. I didn't see my letter to you in the meeting packet, so I'm going to assume that you got to read it. But if you did not and wanted to give me more time, I might add a few more details to my comment. I have nothing against car washes and appreciate that these folks want to start a new business in our town. But unfortunately, this is not the place. I would hope that the applicant would consider another area that's more consistent with an automobile-centered business. A car wash is not a use by right for this lot. It's required to meet criteria for a special review use. And one of these criteria is that, and I'll quote, "The proposed use or development is consistent in all respects with the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan." I hope that in your discussion tonight, you'll dive deeper into this criteria. I don't believe this plan is compliant. Mostly, please look at the definition of and description of rural in our comprehensive plan. Let's see. I, it just, this makes me think it used to be a horse farm and it's coming, you know, then it was going to potentially be a church. And now there's already a gas station, a car wash. I think what's going to come next, is it going to be a fast food restaurant, a drive-through liquor store, a Motel 6? I mean, this is starting, I'm afraid that this is going to set the precedent for this becoming a highway business district rather than a rural gateway to our town. And if you saw on the, I think this was one of the concerns that Planning Commissioner Deal mentioned, and he ultimately voted against recommending approval, which I agreed with. My second concern has to do with traffic. According to the comprehensive plan, the transportation profession recommends a level of service A to C in rural communities. And according to our transportation master plan, the State Highway 4296 Street presently is operating at a level of service F. And in the area where the car wash is going to be, it's signed for 45 miles per hour, but the traffic transportation plan says there's often lower speeds and there's delays at peak hours. And this, and as you guys know, the Institute of Traffic Engineers says that car washes, gas stations, drive-through restaurants are among the highest vehicle trip generating uses. So a car wash is going to add to traffic congestion and air pollution, which is not consistent with a rural, it's more of an urban than rural traffic pattern. And let me just say, sorry, I think I'm out of time, but I just wanted to ask if you do approve this to add some additional sustainability requirements because a higher level of water reuse is possible, and there's also more environmentally friendly detergents. So thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you. Next we have Tiffany Boyd.
Hi. Good evening, Council. Tiffany Boyd, 550 Grant Avenue. Again, want to echo our appreciation for your ongoing commitment to serving our community, meeting after meeting, in addition to your other lives. So thank you for everything you're doing. Again, just echoing a few of my neighbors. Thank you for the presentation, but also no thank you. We don't want a car wash in our community. Car washes are very, they're very traffic dependent, they're very water dependent. They are not in line with wanting to work on a community that is taking the climate crisis seriously. This is a rural context coming in to this gateway in our community. And the rural areas have been described in our own master plan as open space on the perimeter of the city with larger parcels and with a natural resource orientation. So the more concrete we lay down, the more traffic we have, the less this becomes a rural context to our comprehensive plan. Back to what another neighbor was saying about if this does get approved, there are really, really great examples out there about how to do this with the highest amount of reclaimed water. I've even seen from a gleam car wash down in Denver where it was 90% reclaimed water. So I feel like there should be some really strict water and energy restrictions if this does get approved. But again, I feel like it was a swing and a miss approving the 7-Eleven, and I ask you to also not approve this car wash. Thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you. Next we have Joshua Cooperman.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. I don't want to diminish the city staff's excellent work on this application, and the applicants work on the application as well. But I think there are still several points to consider. In particular, I am also concerned about the rural context. Just I, just as I was with the 7-Eleven convenience store and the gas station, the car wash doesn't seem very compatible with the rural designation. For instance, as far as I know, there are no other instances of similar types of businesses or buildings in any rural areas in Louisville. Also, a little bit more specifically, there are a bunch of criteria that this development would have to satisfy under the PUD and SRU, which are in the packet. And I'd like to take issue with a couple of those. Criteria number nine, under part B, talks about incorporating features which, which reduce the demand for water usage. Car wash certainly doesn't seem to do that. Number 10 talks about landscape plans that will help to reduce heating and cooling demands for billings. This car wash is going to put down a lot of pavement. It is concrete, so it doesn't absorb as much heat as tarmac would. But still, it's going to absorb a lot of heat. And it would be great if they could cover some of that, either with more shade trees or with solar awnings, so that the building wouldn't take in the heat that the concrete is taking in from the sun. Number 12 talks about the lot arrangement to maximize solar capacity if they're going to put in solar panels. And I think this point is relevant to also the building orientation, which was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. If the building orientation were changed, besides, you know, sort of guarding or protecting the, the view from all the cars waiting for the car wash, it would also help to increase their solar capacity, I think. I made a few comments before the Planning Commission about this development. In particular, I asked about some of the roof features. There are some dark roof features in the design, which again, will absorb plenty of sun. Of course, our design guidelines don't say that they can't be there, but it would be nice if they did. I also asked if, again, they could put in more shading of the pavement. And the, the Planning Commission kindly asked the applicant about this. Again, the pavement is concrete, not tarmac, so that's, that's a little bit better. But there's a lot of space that, that could really be covered with solar awnings, and that would be awesome. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And I have lost my participant panel. There we go. Any other members of the public care to comment on this application this evening? All right, seeing that, that takes us back over for council questions and comments or discussion. Council members have any questions or comments for the city planning staff or the applicant? All right, quiet bunch today. I have a few questions. Were you planner Ritchie? So we previously discussed the median on 96th Street. And could you just refresh the group, what triggers the building of that median on 96th Street? And my question really relates to buffering in general.
I would have to go back and check the phasing plans within the original PUD. I don't remember offhand, but I don't know the answer to that offhand. So if you give me a minute, I can check the phasing plan for the previous approval. My hunch is probably just as the site continues to develop out and we further, it's triggered by some traffic movements, but I'll get back to you on that one.
Okay. Do you want me to wait to ask some other questions?
I'm happy to kind of, yeah, I'm happy to pull that up while you're, while you're, while you're going.
Thank you so much. So my next question's just about the material. One detrimental point out about these online meetings is that we don't get to see the material boards, and it's, it's sometimes hard from the renderings to be able to tell what materials of construction are. Could you just describe the material that's used?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So just to clarify, staff still does receive material sample boards in hand, physical boards in our office so that we can verify kind of quality of the material texture, you know, appearance, just to make sure from our perspective, they meet the design standards. So we did receive that and just want to be clear that even though we're not passing it around on the diet staff, is still actively doing that behind the scenes. So there are three primary materials on the property. One is a CMU block of kind of a mixed, mix of CMU blocks. It's a kind of a light tan, light gray, light tannish gray in color. It's, you know, just a textured split face CMU block is what they call that. And then the other two, there's a, it's, it looks like wood component. It's actually a metal panel system that's architectural in nature with a wood grain finish. It's a, it's a light kind of blonde colored wood with wood grain. And then there's a third kind of primary material, and it, it's intended, it looks like it's intended to replicate like a corten or a weathering steel. And so it's kind of a reddish brown in color with kind of a mottled appearance, and it's matte, it's not shiny. So none of the metal materials are reflective. They're all matte with, you know, kind of a matte, non-reflective finish. So does that describe?
Thank you. So, yeah, and so thank you. And so one of the responsibilities we have as council members is to, you know, make a judgment call on the materials of construction and understand how it does or does not comply with the CDDSG Commercial Development Design Standards and Guidelines. And so really appreciate staff doing all the heavy lifting and making recommendations and helping us get to that point. But ultimately, we have to decide that. And so what I'm trying to understand in the standards and guidelines for commercial development, my understanding is that just plain unfinished concrete block is not an acceptable finish, and it comes across that way in the renderings. And so I just want to describe that.
Yeah, so generally speaking, you're right, like kind of your old-school center block is certainly not allowed. In this case, it's a higher-quality architectural block with a split face finish. And we see it very commonly on properties that are compliant with the CDDSG. So there's numerous properties, you know, along the McCaslin corridor that use this block in portions or along South Boulder Road. So from staff's perspective, we don't have concerns per se that that particular material is not compliant or not consistent with what's in the CDDSG.
So, and just so that I am on the right, maybe it's possible for you to put up the picture of the building. I just want to, I just want to understand that material and where it is. And I just, at the end of the day, have to make a judgment about whether that's plain unfinished concrete block or not.
So, you can see here too, in this image here below, and I also want to say that the architect from Hoover Architecture, who's the project architect, is on the call and may be better prepared to answer more of this differentiation. And so, again, it's a mix of, sorry, am I not, I'm not sharing?
You're not, not.
Am I? Sorry, I pulled it up, but forgot to hit share. Hold on one second. There we go. So, you can see here on the rendering, the darker gray is, it's, it's reading here like kind of your just straightforward cinder block. I wouldn't say it's that actual kind of that gray unfinished. But this is the split face down here, lower, and then the upper portion, it's a lighter kind of a lighter off-white CMU block, and that is more of a smooth finish, but it definitely shows some texture through the type of aggregate that the block is using. And so, does that answer your question there?
Yeah. So, my, my question's not about the white block or the wood panel or the steel. It's just really about that basically gray area that just, it comes off in this picture and it's, it's not a photo or anything. That's why I'm asking about it. It comes off as a cinder block in this picture. And so, I'm trying to understand what that material is.
I mean, it's the same shape and size as your, you know, kind of traditional cinder block material, but again, it's got a split face finish, which if, if you see that, it's, it's very rush, rough. It has a lot of relief, some, a lot of texture and relief on it and again, is consistent with other commercial buildings throughout Lewisville. I think I'm happy to let Mark, Mr. Mark Burrissey, who's with the project architect, maybe take, see if he can describe it a little better.
Sure. Thanks. And Mark, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I, it's really, actually Lisa Ritchie actually did a very good job of describing it. It's actually best to actually see it in, in a picture or in person. There is a lot of relief. You'll see a lot of shadows within the block from all different angles. It is not your, your, what you're thinking, very smooth face concrete masonry unit. We don't typically use those on an exterior finish in a building.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, and maybe this points out, you know, for future hearings and opportunity for maybe material boards to be circulated around or something like that. It's just, it is really challenging to understand what that material is in this context and then make that judgment. And so, I just wonder, Planner Ritchie, if you could tell us, there was quite a discussion in the meeting minutes that were included in our record at planning commission around the size of the initial plantings of the trees that are, serve as the screen. And so, if you could just point me to where in the actual PUD there is an agreement about the initial size of trees so that there's some kind of like written guarantee.
Good question. So, yeah, I have the PUD up. So, generally, within the CDDSG, we have minimum, we have minimum standards for plantings. And so, you'll find the actual standard there on sheet six. And so, that shows the caliper size and the minimum height. And so, generally, those come in, those are pretty consistently come in. We'd actually, you know, we'll check that when we get the building permit in and we'll check that when we do our final inspections, just to make sure that they meet those standards. And so, it meets the standards in the CDDSG and again, we'll confirm that throughout the process. Planning, you know, we did talk about, I think, you know, to be fair, the renderings provided by the applicant show probably 10 years growth and I think that's probably a reasonable assumption. I think the landscape architect and myself probably both agree that that's probably what it's going to look like in 10 years. It's not going to look like that on day one. We're going to have, you know, fairly small trees, six to eight foot evergreen trees and, you know, the deciduous trees are going to range in height anywhere from maybe 10 feet to 15 feet, just depending on what species it is. So, that's certainly one way you can get landscape screening more effective on day one is to require trees of larger caliper or higher evergreen trees. Planning Commission didn't include that as a condition of approval, but I certainly would be happy to talk about that with city council if there's concern on the effectiveness of the landscape screening to meet that. And I think just given the fact that this is an SRU and given the fact that there's some discretion within the design guideline standard that it's, you know, that the drive aisles are adequately screened. I think that's certainly within council's purview to up the standard on what needs to be there on day one. So, I think that's something we can, we can talk about and staff could carry forward as a condition of approval.
Thank you, Lisa. And then just last question is just around the EV charging station that you mentioned. If you could just clarify for, for everyone's benefit, what that was in reference?
So, technically, I was referring to the one that was previously approved on 7-Eleven. So, there's the high, the high speed or the DC fast charger that's coming in with the 7-Eleven development. So, that was a condition of approval from city council for the 7-Eleven to the south. So, that's shown on their building permit. They're carrying forth with that. I think it's actually two, it's got a dual charge port on there. So, I think it could charge two vehicles at one time. And then also, as you know, city council recently adopted the electrification ordinance, which included EV charging requirements for all retail uses. And so, this property would be subject to that at building permit. It's, the specifics aren't shown on the PUD, but just through the building permit, which I think requires one EV charging station for the site. And I haven't done the math off the top of my head, but I believe they'd be subject to one.
Thank you very much. Other council members have questions or comments or other discussion? Council member Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I was, I've heard a lot of concern about water use from various citizens. So, I wanted to talk to here Director Ritchie, if you had a a sense of sort of what the, what the water use for something like this is. And maybe you can talk to us about also how that plays into the tap, the tap fees and, and then potentially the need to procure additional water rights.
Sure. I think that's a great question, given the context of that. And I'm happy to see Director Koer on the call because I'm going to probably ask him to chime in on some of, more of the specifics. But so generally, Public Works reviewed the application as part of the development review process and part of that includes, you know, sort of an assumption on water use and can the city provide water to this particular user? So, you know, without knowing the specifics, generally, at this point, if we are authorizing a PUD, there's, there is the baseline assumption that the city has the water rights and conserve this particular use. I don't know offhand the anticipated water demand. And generally, with every building permit for new new building, new construction additions, any changes of use, our Public Works Department requires kind of a fixture count analysis in a tap fee. So, an anticipated water demand. And so, the tap fee is determined through a series of application requirements at building permit. And then it's also monitored over time. So, water use, you know, we do pay attention to water use to understand if someone is going, you know, substantially significantly over what they indicated, then we do, we can revisit that. So, Kurt, I'm not sure if you're listening at this point, if you want to chime in anymore.
Sure, I'm happy to help out here. Kurt Koer, Public Works and Utilities Director. So, the assumption that as land develops within the city, individual parcels, that there is a baseline amount of water available that is correct. And then for commercial taps, that is based off the estimated demand of that particular parcel. It's generally provided to us as an estimate by the architect engineer and stamped. And then we charge appropriately based off that demand to go out based on the market rate of water and get additional water as needed per our long-term water rights master plan.
Thank you. I appreciate the answers to those questions. I, I heard some, some references to to potentially recycling some of the water within this particular facility. Can you speak a little bit? I, I'm not sure that I specifically saw that in the application. Maybe I just missed it while I was doing that. But can you, can you talk a little bit about what, what the, the plans are for this particular facility?
So, I'm going to let the applicant, I think, defer to that. We don't have the specifics and the details and that's not tied, just so you know, that's not tied conditionally to this application. So, if that's something city council, there's no commitment, I would say, at this point in time for that requirement is part of this application. They've represented it to be so, but it's not embedded within any of the requirements. So, I think if there, I'll let the applicant speak to that more. But again, if there's a certain commitment standard that we'd like to embed within the SRU, we can have that conversation.
Sure. Yeah. So, with the, with, with the reclaim system, it's basically, I think it's 60 to 70% reclaimed of, of the, the, what is it? The raw water that comes from the city. So, basically what happens is the, the, the water that's left over gets sent into, it's actually all the fresh water that goes down to the draining system goes into these tanks and that's, and those tanks are cleaned and is able to reuse that water. So, and that's also another way to get down on the tap size because we're already at a very, you know, we're at a decent tap size and Lewisville, obviously, as everyone knows, doesn't have the, the cheapest tap sizes in town. So, we tried to do a system that's obviously sustainable, but also has the ability to, to still clean the cars well because at the end of the day, you'd rather have fresh water because you don't, you're not, you know, you don't have the chance of contaminants getting into the water we're using. But we're using some of the best systems that you can buy. And I'm not the, the expert to talk about that. It would be the, the manufacturer that's putting these in for us.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Most.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Brown, for asking one of my questions. So, I have kind of three areas of questions, concerns. One was mentioned by one of our constituents about the potential for growth in this area, starting with a gas station, a 7-Eleven and a car wash and what kind of additional businesses are likely to grow up around that? And is that consistent with the rural designation of that area? That, that's a big concern for me and I don't know, you know, if there are any limitations or if there are no limitations and, you know, we're just going to be looking at continued parcel growth here with similar type businesses until we have this sort of corridor of businesses that become the entrance to our, to our city. And if, if if there's anything that you can enlighten me about as far as any sort of limitations we'd have or is it just a case-by-case basis and we'd have to come up and look at that overall?
No, I think that's a great question. So, yeah, just to come back to the mayor's question before we forget on the, the striping. So, I did have a chance to pull the phasing plans. The final phasing plan at this point in time only includes striped medians. There's no physical raised medians in 96th Street. However, you know, there are a little bit of some caveats through there, embedded through there that, you know, things can change along the way with civil construction design and if we hit any triggers. But just to be clear, the PUD and that phasing plan with that first plat only contemplated striping. So, just to go back to that. So, going on then to Councilmember Most's question. So, generally speaking, when we look at GDP, so when this GDP was approved, we had a lot of that discussion around what is the right context? What is the rural character? How does that apply to this particular property? So, essentially, the GDP set the zoning and the allowed uses and within there, generally, all of those uses should have been, you know, considered for consistency with the comprehensive plan. When we get to the stage where we are now, basically, what we look toward primarily is the GDP and determine if the use is permitted or if it requires a special review. If it's permitted, it doesn't necessarily mean it's immediately assumed to be fine. We still look through the design standards and the appropriateness for how the property meets the design standards and the standards within the GDP. And so, you know, we do have some ability to contextualize at a PUD level for a specific use, but generally, it's assumed that that use is probably fine. It's just a matter of how, not if. When the use requires an SRU, we do look back toward comprehensive plan and those overarching policies to understand if that particular use is appropriate for that particular area. And so, really, because this car wash needs an SRU, I think all of those can come into play. That being said, I think that the framework of the GDP, you know, this is, this is consistent with, I think what the applicant's intent was when they purchased, you know, United Properties was the master developer that took the last couple plats and PUD through. And so, I don't think that this is inconsistent with what they intended or what they represented at the time that could be coming through. Not to assume that it was appropriate. That's certainly not what I'm trying to say, but I don't think that there was the intent from their perspective to not be transparent with uses like this along this corridor. They added the car wash use as, you know, a potential SRU use within the GDP. So, I think there was some level of transparency there from their perspective. But that being said, it certainly requires discretion from council as to determine if it's consistent and appropriate. Does that answer your question for background?
Yeah, I, I guess as I look at this, my concern is I'm looking at this map and I'm looking at the intersection of 96 and Dillon Road, which is already a problematic intersection with traffic, with accidents. I think we've had deadly accidents there.
Yep.
And adding to me this kind of business density is problematic because we're putting more pressure on road infrastructure that is already inadequate to handle, to handle the traffic on it. So, if this becomes a long-term evolution of businesses, we've just created a destination that's going to dramatically impact the road infrastructure. And we know that 96th Street, what is turn, I don't know if it, if it's two lanes at that point or just turns into two lanes, wherever it is, I'm not exactly sure at what point in that map. But I mean, to me, I look at that and I think, you know, that's kind of, it's problematic in terms of looking at overall planning for traffic patterns, for safety, for, you know, infrastructure, required infrastructure. So, that's a concern for me.
I think that's a great point. If I, if I might chime in just a little bit. So,
Sure.
we, when the GDP was approved, just for a little bit more background, since you don't have the benefit of the rest of the knowledge council has at this point, since most of them were here. When the GDP was approved, the applicant submitted a new traffic study, you know, that contemplated these uses that was reviewed and approved by Public Works that we talked about, you know, the fact that this is adding traffic here. So, you may not be aware that there's a new traffic signal going in, in front of this 7-Eleven in this location and the road will be widened through here. So, you may have seen that new curb and gutter going in. And so, you're right. This development is absolutely impacting traffic in the area and along this corridor, which spreads throughout the region. But that was assumed and I think generally acknowledged when those improvements were approved and are now under construction.
Right. And an added traffic stop there, traffic like there will obviously make sense in terms of safety. Also, to me, you know, maybe, you know, that, it sounds like that train has left the station, but that is a concern to me because again, we, we already have backups at that intersection. Particularly, you know, obviously at, at commute hours and this is also tied into traffic at Monarch. So, that's a concern for me. Okay. The other thing that I have a concern about is water usage and, and Councilmember Brown brought up that concern. And my additional concern around that is not just water usage for that property, but particularly in light of the addition of landscaping, you know, as a community, I think we need to understand and the that we're facing. And that includes less water and that means we have to be thinking about what kind of landscaping makes sense. And I'm concerned, I know there's the, the advantage of planting trees, they create shade, that reduces heat, all the rest of that. But I'm also concerned that we're facing a period of significant climate change. And when I see grass in pictures and I see a lot of that foliage, I'm concerned that, that the, and I understand the reliance on the screening and I understand the preference certainly of plants to walls, but I'm concerned about, you know, whether or not we're looking at this through the lens of zero scapeing and what is going to be sustainable. You know, you're talking about what the growth is rate is going to be like in ten years. You know, what's our climate going to be like in ten years? So, you know, uh, that's a big concern for me as well. And I guess, again, I'm chiming in here, so I'm sure there's lots of history that I don't know about, but that, when I look at that overall, and I look at, you know, what appears to me, grass along sidewalks and a lot of, uh, you know, plants, and, and how much of that is part of the, um, the property owners', um, uh, responsibility, and how much of that is the city? Are we inheriting that? And, and is that part of a plan that we have, or how, how we're managing, um, landscaping? Because I think we need to be thinking about it. Yes, great big trees are beautiful, but you know, um, or does it make sense? So that's another question I have. Is that any, has any of that been considered in terms of, you know, what's required? From a screening standpoint?
Those are great questions. And so I agree with you and, you know, philosophically on all of those points, and I think our whole planning staff does. So, um, we are trying to balance, I think, you know, the standards that we have in place, and then, um, so just for a little bit more about this particular site, there is turf grass along the ninety-sixth street frontage, but the remainder of the landscaping you see within the site doesn't include turf grass. It's all kind of shrubs and then, you know, kind of different types of ground covers that are less intensive than turf grass. And so, um, really, the applicant, you know, the overall developer really preferred that turf grass environment, um, to be kind of the base ground cover for that whole frontage. And so they've, you know, they really led that. I think we encouraged them to come in with, you know, different options that included less of that. That I think was driven by theirs, but it's, it's allowed in our design standards. And so from a waiver perspective, it doesn't trigger a waiver. It actually would be the opposite. We'd have to approve a waiver, which is probably fine. I think we'd support it, um, for those very reasons that you state. But that's just kind of where we are, um, from that perspective. So, um,
Okay, that's all. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Most. Councilmember Fay.
Thank you. Yes, um, I have a couple of questions also on this, on the landscaping issue. I think that that is an excellent way of blocking the view from the road and kind of maintaining an agricultural look. But I do think it would be best if that were zero scaped and with native, uh, trees. If we put in, uh, cottonwood trees, for example, that know how to grow here, that would make a big difference. Um, and then the, the shrubs, the lower shrubs also with native grasses and things like that to fill in. So I, I do like the idea of zero escaping, the landscaping. Um, on the other issues of water use, I really like the idea of recycling the water. I think that's a wonderful feature. And regarding the increased use, I, I, I just don't see that as being something that would be caused by this car wash. Um, and my reasoning is there's a certain number of cars that get washed in Lewisville. And where they get washed doesn't impact how much water is used in the city for washing cars. So we've already got two other car washes. We have one at the gas station on McCaslin. So the cars may go there to this one instead, but I don't think it would increase the number of cars that are being washed. So the water, the actual amount of water being used to wash cars, I don't think would be impacted. And the other thing I, I go with is, you know, I, I keep going back to the, um, swearing in that we just did of the new council members, where we're supposed to be upholding, uh, the, the codes and ordinances of Lewisville. And this meets the requirements of those codes that we've put in place. And so based on the city's input, the planning input, which I think, Lisa, you did a wonderful job. I don't see how we could not approve this particular project. And there are conditions that we could, um, request, like maybe putting solar for their energy use or something like that. But I don't think that we should deny the application.
Mayor Pro Timbaland?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I, I appreciate the comments by my colleagues and, um, Councilor Fay, he, uh, mentioned some that I'm going to mention as well. You know, we did approve, uh, a GDP for this area in two thousand seventeen. Uh, we made some changes into it. This council, almost, almost this council, um, approved changes. And what's before us is, um, a special review use for, for this area, and it's, it's a special review use because of, of the particular use. And as I look at the analysis, it's on page one eighty-five of this, of our packet. Basically, this request complies with our municipal code. You know, the GDP that was laid out and so forth. So I, I agree that I, this is something I, 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 I agree with Council Fay that this is something that I am going to support. If you want to make some minor tweaks here and there, I could certainly be open to that. You know, the one thing about the landscaping, um, you know, when you do landscaping, you do the trees and so forth, I, I'm a little, reticent to want to do something that's greater than what are being proposed. Because we really want, if we're going to do landscaping, or it's something that's going to be able to handle the drought condition, something that's going to, you know, over time, um, you know, acclimatized to that area, to the weather, to being dry. So, you know, I, I could approve this the way it is. And so, um, with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution number eighty-seven, series twenty-twenty-one, and I would certainly entertain any friendly, um, motions. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Councilmember Fay. Councilmember, um, I just want to make sure, uh, everyone doesn't need to speak, you know, if your, your thoughts have been said, there's no need. But before I go back through folks, I just want to make sure people have a chance to talk. Everyone's good? All right, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, um, given the concerns about water use, um, concerns about the climate, um, and the particular in, impact on, uh, water, I would, uh, and, and the applicant's willingness to use a recycled, a recycling system for their water use. I would ask that we add a condition to the approval of this, um, especially, special review use, um, so that, uh, the applicant installs a system that can recycle and reclaim seventy percent of the water that's used in the car wash.
Um, Mayor Pro Timbaland, do you accept the friendly amendment? I believe Councilmember Brown was referring to the standard that the applicant put forward that they were planning to use, and just documenting that within the PUD somewhere.
Um, yes, may I ask two questions, please? Uh, I want to ask the applicant, um, did you state seventy percent?
Uh, we said sixty to seventy percent. Um, I'll have to get with the manufacturer to, to, to confirm that. But it should be at, at, uh, it should be between sixty and seventy percent. And I, and I, you know, we have, we have, I have the numbers here in front of me, the user's calculation and whatnot, but, um, that's what, uh, we were told from the manufacturer, sixty to seventy percent.
Okay, uh, and so, um, Lisa, how would we, is there an easy way to add this to this?
So the Yeah, I mean, I would suggest a condition of approval, something to the effect of, you know, the applicant, um, you know, the, the, the development shall be required to use a recycling system for their water usage that recycles, you know, no less than or up, you know, however you want to structure that, you know, seventy percent to be verified at building permit, something to that effect. And we can include a note on the PUD stating such. So again, I just would want to confirm with the applicant, it sounds like that's, um, you don't have concern with that condition of approval, but just would want an acknowledgement that will, you know, if that happens tonight, that we'll be tracking that onward and forward, and that would carry with the property.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Timbaland, I, I just offer, the way you frame the condition would be that staff will work with the applicant to memorialize the recycling of water of sixty percent or more. That way, we can figure out the appropriate way to document it.
I accept the condition.
And then Councilmember Brown, I, we changed it in the discussion of sixty percent or more, just to be consistent with the applicant, was that in the spirit of what you were attempting to do?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, uh, obviously, I would like it to be ninety percent, but I am also trying to be realistic um, about, about what I think the applicant, um, has put forward, and also what I think the rest of council will accept, so.
And then I just need to put a pin in it. One second, Councilmember Fay, do you also accept the friendly amendment as it's been stated?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Oh, uh, no, that was my, that was my comment at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I appreciate the conversation tonight. You know, I think that where your, um, applicants, I think what you're hearing from the, you know, residents is that, you know, we're not, or at least the ones who are participating, we're not like, you know, dying for a car wash here. Um, we also understand that it is, you know, probably a highly successful business on a highly trafficked road. And, you know, I think it, I don't think a lot of, um, no, as a, as a resident myself, not super excited for a seven eleven and gas station and what have you, um, in this area. But, you know, um, it's hard for me to argue that a car wash next to a gas station doesn't seem to fit. When the gas station's been approved, a car wash right next to it is reasonable. And I think, I think what's really important and what we're hearing is, you know, and I, and I hope that you take from this is, um, a real concern about environmental sustainability. So if it's going to be a car wash, that it's the best car wash ever, right? If it's good, and I, and I like that you brought some of that forward, and I appreciate Councilmember Brown for trying to get that in the, um, actual agreement. So it's not just a promise, but actually something that needs to be delivered. But we're, I think we're, you know, speaking the same language, which is good. And then I think for the rural piece, you know, having it a setback as it is and having as many trees as we have, I think that's kind of what, what changes it from an urban feel to a rural feel in that area. Well, not perfect. I don't think anyone's arguing that car wash screams rural. The, the particular design of the, the setback in the trees make it a more rural car wash than a typical car wash. Um, and so, you know, I, I appreciate the balance of all the, all the needs and requests and, and to Councilmember Fay's point that, you know, this does seem pretty in line with what we approved of the GDP and that there's not a huge ask here. But, but it is still something that, you know, we're trying to get the best version of what you're trying to do. So I appreciate that you guys are local and that you already have a business here, and that you're trying to have a second business here, and, and that you care about the community. But, you know, I really do hope that you realize that it, you'll only be more successful if you really promote the sustainability of your car wash. And that it's, if, if you want to get your car washed, this is the place to go. And that changes the narrative a little bit, that, you know, why? Why is this the car wash we should be going to? It's because of the things you've committed to and that you're doing. And I think you'll find more success in, in being the greenest car wash in town. And I, and I think that's what you're hearing from some of our other residences. Hey, there's a good way to do this, and there are some really good examples, and it sounds like you're thinking about that a little bit, but just accelerating that as much as you can would be fantastic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments on the motion? Um, I just have a few comments to add. So, you know, I, I respect that some of you review this and find that it is compliant with all of the regulations. I don't. And so I do think it shuts down discussion to say, as a matter of fact, it does. I think it's, you know, your prerogative and your perspective and your judgment, which is totally acceptable, and I respect that. But when I look at it, we have a responsibility to look at the rural character of this area. Uh, in the GDP approval, which we approved, um, there were representations from this applicant that the landscaped median was a reason to reduce that buffer area, and that that would contribute to the rural context. And now we're hearing from our planning director that, in fact, there is no landscaped median. And so something that's been previously represented verbally isn't documented anywhere in this plan, and so that is really disappointing to me. On top of that, we're finding out that the screening for this is not the screening that we're going to see in the pictures that's been represented. That'll be screening that may or may not happen in ten years, if the plants grow in that way, and they don't, all that. And if we follow up and ensure that they're grown that way. So there, in my opinion, is inadequate screening to support this special review use. There are a number of ways that the screening could be made. Um, the building could be oriented differently so that the queuing of the cars was in the backside of the building or on the side of the building. But the way that it's oriented, um, the screening is inadequate. So I think there are a number of judgment calls that are reasonable differences of opinion, and I respect that the rest of your judgments are that, you know, the screening's adequate and it's consistent. But I do think, you know, some of the language that's been used tonight shuts down discussion rather than leaving the door open for discussion. So I just encourage that, you know, people can have differences in opinion. At the end of the day, we'll vote, we all still get along. Like, you know, things will be built and it's fine, but it's okay for those different perspectives to come forward, and we don't want to use language, um, to shut them down. So additionally, i- in my opinion, you know, there's been no demonstration that it's not, um, that, that the materials of construction are consistent with the CBDSG. It, it really does come across as plain unfinished concrete block on a building, which is not appropriate in the commercial areas of town. Uh, it's one of our standards that's articulated, uh, that's written out clearly in our CBDSG that we need to see, uh, masonry, brick, stone, and stucco from our strongly preferred textured concrete may be considered. Uh, wood is appropriate in the context, but just to have concrete block, it's listed out as one of the standards as unacceptable. And so I don't, uh, from my perspective, in my judgment, this doesn't meet the, the design standards and guidelines for a commercial area of town, and we should not perpetuate concrete block buildings all around town when they're not allowed. So I would want to see some of the things that, uh, Planning Commissioner Williams and Planning Commissioner Deal brought forward about the age of the trees and the landscaping, if we are going to accept this layout with the inadequate screening, because that's the only way we can ensure that we will have the type of screening that we're expecting from the images that were shown. And I, I guess I would want staff to go, um, back to the drawing board and look into, um, the landscaped median, because that was one of the things that was represented verbally to us as a reason for reducing the buffer and maintaining the, the rural area. So I would want to understand what we could do to get that land, that, um, landscaped median back in. And so, you know, as the discussion has come forward tonight, because of the issues with the screening, because of the issues with the queuing, because of the issues with the landscape buffer and the materials of construction, I don't find that it's consistent for a special review use within the rural area. Other folks, Councilmember Lay?
Um, I, I actually, if I could, um, wanted to ask, um, Planner Ritchie about the landscape median for just
Yeah. No, I, I was just, um, conferring with Directors of Caro too. So from our recollection, there was not a representation of a landscape median within the centerline of the road. Um, our recollection was that there was, you know, the right of way included the tree lawn and an additional eight feet of landscaping within the tree lawn that was over and above the thirty foot, um, within the private property. So that was our recollection for the rationale for the decrease in the parking buffer, but I will certainly go back and check the record. But I think that's what we both recall, um, was the representation was the additional, you know, the detached sidewalk, and then the additional eight-foot tree lawn within right of way.
I mean, I, but not to be, yeah, there's no, there's no point in going back and forth on this at this point, because I don't think we're going to continue, and I don't think we're going to look it up. But like, there was a specific discussion about why it couldn't be put in at that time, since the entire width of the road wouldn't be done, and we wouldn't know where it was going to be, and it would come later on a later PUD. So I'm, I'm not. It, it's in a rela, I think it's in a relevant point unless we're planning on continuing and looking up what was said, and, you know, I don't think that anyone's going to go there, so. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, um, I, I certainly had the concern around the, the landscaping and, and in particular, just that the, the screening that's provided by the trees and the age of the trees, because it, I mean, it's good to know that the fact that, the fact that there's an application that, you know, that we're learning doesn't have, or that we, um, we get clarification that the landscaping is, you know, the way it's going to look in ten years, maybe, as the mayor says, um, probably isn't good enough, but we, that has come out in the hearing. That's a good thing. That's why we have these hearings. That's why we talk about it. I would be very much interested in, in, um, making sure through a note, uh, to the PUD that we address that. I don't know how we address that. I, I am not as sanguine about cottonwoods as my fellow counselor Deb Fay is. But I also, I mean, I think that's something we can do with a, with a note. I, I think generally speaking that this, um, I don't have I don't have, you know, some of the concerns that the mayor raised, I think, are really important. I, the design guidelines, I think, are are met. I, you know, sometimes these renderings aren't very good. I think the description that I, and I agree that it would be so much better to have these things that we could put our fingers on and that we can see what the shading is and all that. It really would be helpful, but I heard the description. And I don't think it's concrete block in the way that we really don't want. And it's, you know, in looking at it, I think even the renderings that we have, I think there is, there's a a design that is to me dialing very, very high quality, and I think the materials look look fine, and I think they're consistent with the C D D S G. There there were some comments about the rural character, though, and I, that does has been a very interesting discussion around that. I pulled the, you know, I pulled the comprehensive plan while we were sitting here. And I I think, you know, the problem with the current comprehensive plan, I will say, is you, folks pull out of it this and that, and they look for their friends many times. It's really hard sometimes to to be be able to say absolutely this use is inconsistent with a comprehensive plan. I don't believe this use is a consistent con- comprehen- comprehensive plans discussion of the rural context. So I'm, I think it points to something we need to be doing in the next cycle of the comprehensive plan, which is to bear down on some of these terms, so that we don't have something that's really hard to apply in this in this context. But I do think that it, if the, if landscaping is taken care of, I think we have done a great deal to to preserve the rural texture of that part. And so, and I'm I'm persuaded by Councilmember Fahey's comment about the the use of water. I I'm pretty amazed that there's that much recycled and reused water at a car wash. I that just, to me, just blows me away. I think we've got some guardrails around that. Thanks to Councilmember Brown for that. And I I think it's a, I think it's a good project. I think the special review criteria have been met, and I'm comfortable voting for this.
Any other discussion from members? Councilmember Lay, you had talked about adding a note about the age of the landscaping. Did you want to do that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I mean, this is the one place where I feel like a little bit of help from planning could be helpful.
Yeah, so, you know, generally speaking, I think you can, you know, the technical way to do that would be require greater caliper trees. And so I, the landscape architect for the applicant is on the call. We don't have Alan Gill anymore at this point, who I would have leaned on to understand kind of what could represent a tree with, you know, ten-year growth or five-year growth or kind of whatever your standard is. But, you know, generally, you could increase the caliper size on a deciduous tree, you know, maybe three and a half. I'm not sure. Again, I would lean on, you know, Chris March, I think, to understand where trees can still be healthy to be transplanted at that point from a viability perspective, and then increase the height of an evergreen tree. So if I could get some, I guess, some indication from council on maybe the degree to which you'd like to push that, then I think we can decide the right number with the landscape architect.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't know the, I guess I I don't know that we have to have ten-year growth. That strikes me as maybe unrealistic. But I I think from my standpoint, I'm more interested in having the trees significantly more mature. I don't know how to say that in the right way, that they be that they be trees that are more than likely going to survive in the climate that we have and the, you know, without without turning back all of the water that they're saving at the car wash to to be putting on the landscaping. So I think, you know, you want, you want taller trees, trees that provide better shade there and that are a little bit closer to what the renderings are, that are likely to thrive over.
So, yeah, I'm wondering if it's maybe like a twenty-five percent more growth, but I'll let Chris March for the applicant chime in too.
Sure, the 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 one thing to consider, it kind of goes against what everyone would probably want, is when it comes to tree planting, smaller is better. There's less shock, there's less of the roots get destroyed in the transplanting. And there's been studies typically after, you know, three years, a smaller tree will actually catch up and surpass a larger caliper tree that goes in. So when the trees go in, like a deciduous tree, it's it's by caliper inch. So it's, you know, the width of the trunk at, you know, breast height. So usually, typically in the front range, everything's around two inches, sometimes two and a half. It's actually hard to find bigger trees unless you're trying to transplant them. And there's just more stress that goes on the tree, goes into it with the trees with it when transplanting, it's harder to keep them alive. So it's, you you get the initial bigger impact, but, you know, within a few years, the smaller tree is going to surpass it. At my old house, I planted a tree in the tree lawn, and it was Denver, and it was a free tree. So I was all excited about it, and you get it. And it's it's bare root, which it looks like a twig. And so we planted it with the kids, and this was like six years ago. And, you know, in in seven, I guess it was seven years ago. So like by year seven, it was as tall as the tree that had been there for fifteen years. So a lot of times, smaller is better. So something to to think about. And and I know I did hear some points with with zero escaping and and the the shrub plantings. So really, what I was trying to do is, you know, be, you know, tie into the existing plantings with the seven eleven to the south, but then also making sure that I'm I'm pulling plant material that are on the Louisville, the Louisville recommended plant list and really focusing on some of those lower water plant selections. The the other thing too with with zero scape, it's it's not no turf always, but it's limiting the amounts of turf. And then when we do use turf, it's not doing it in smaller strips that are inefficient to irrigate. So it's doing stuff that's, you know, at least six feet wide, so we can irrigate it, you know, efficiently. And then and then the plants that you see in the in the beds, that's, you know, point source. So it's it's a drip line going to each plant. So it's trying to be efficient with our water use that way as well. So just a couple of things to consider, consider with that.
Just in in feeding back to you on that, okay, we, I I and I do understand the idea of smaller, smaller is better in some ways. So you you're not going to come in with a tree that looks like the ones that are in the renderings. Clearly. What is, what's realistic to get to that point in five to seven years? How much bigger, you know, what is is that, is that realistic to get the kind of growth that we have there in five to seven years if we plant, you know, one of the trees that that may be a little bit more mature or?
Well, it's, it it, if you want bigger trees, then you plant smaller. Because you're not going to go through the shock. So once you plant that bigger tree, it it doesn't respond well right away. Because the other thing too is you're you're changing soils conditions. So if you're going with a bigger tree that's used to different soils, you know, it's a little bit more shock. So it's it's really trying to take the shock out of the transplant of the trees. So, you know, it it kind of gets to how it's done, and the it's all the fine roots that get clipped off when you try and get a bigger tree. So, yeah, that's that that's just been my understanding of it and and with the the research I've done in the past.
So maybe, and I'm trying to find a way to ask this question directly. Eric, or I I'm not having much luck here. But is there any way to get even remotely close to what that rendering looks like in less than seven to ten years? And if so, how do we do it? Do we do it with small trees and everything stays the same, and we don't need a note to add to the P U D? Or is there something different than what is there, what we've talked about that? By putting that in there, by putting a note in the P U D, we are, we specify to you how to get to that place. I mean, that's what we're trying to do. I mean, I realize we all come at this from a different angle, and I appreciate you're the expert. But that's, it's just something that is important to me, and it has been something others have mentioned as part of the rural character of the place.
Yeah, and and the only concern I would have with, you you know, we can put things in and we can water it and maintain it, but there's there's still mother nature. So if if you're looking to match an image, that becomes very difficult to do or something that was computer generated, because, you know, you get that one spring, spring hailstorm and something happens to to the trees, then you may have to skip back. So there's there's a lot of things that are just, you know, nature. And as 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 a landscape architect, as much as I want to control nature, sometimes it's not something that can always be done. So.
Is there anything you?
I'm, I hear you, Councilmember Lay and the rest of council. What I maybe would suggest at this point is a condition of approval that the landscape plan will be, you know, just, it's going to, you know, similar to kind of what you were talking about with Nathan for the the park surface, that the city staff will kind of review the landscape plan to determine, you know, the most appropriate tree species that are going to achieve the effects for treat, you know, screening that are appropriate for this climate, that balance water use and water makes them grow and all of that. So if you're comfortable just doing a condition of approval, you know, I can take this feedback and partner with Alan Gill and the Parks Department, who really in our, you know, in our city forest are maybe right, where we can, we can work to continue to refine this. That's probably the best we can do tonight.
I think if we can refer somewhere in there to tying that into the rural context, I think that would be helpful.
I I I think the one thing that would probably go a long way.
If everyone, everyone needs to wait until they're called upon. And so, you know, I appreciate that the applicant is eager to talk, but Councilmember Lay offered a friendly amendment, and I need to find out if the motioner is accepting of the friendly amendment. So Councilmember Lay, was your amendment for staff to work with the applicant to ensure the most appropriate landscaping so that the screening reflects the images? I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm trying.
In the in the rural context of the the property.
And then Mayor Proton Maloney, do you accept the friendly amendment?
I accept.
Councilmember Fahey, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to write it down so that when you guys ask me what it was again later, that I can repeat. Okay, thank you. And then Councilmember Most.
I have to try to add more complexity, but I'm wondering if there's something between a concrete fence and a full grown tree that might be helpful, like some kind of natural fencing or other kind of natural, you know, barrier that that, again, would provide some initial screening right off the bat and then give the trees a chance to grow. So I'm just wondering, you know, it seems to me there must be other materials, other types of natural-based fencing structure that that we might consider as a way of bridging that gap.
That's a great question. I, I mean, I think we've, you know, I've been trying to think about this application for a long time on alternatives, and I haven't come up with anything, but I am certainly happy to entertain ideas. If anyone can picture something, I mean, you know, you could do like a split rail fence, but again, that's fairly open in nature. You know, that's matches the rural character and matches kind of our open space aesthetic elsewhere in the city. There is more of kind of natural rock walls rather than maybe a brick masonry wall. So you could go with more naturalized materials, but again, that's kind of a more permanent structure installation, so.
I've just seen some amazing fencing that people seem to be putting up in just in their home, you know, around their homes, like. And and I'm not saying it would be that, but I'm just, you know, it's like some really interesting naturally, you know, naturally constructed fencing that just is very attractive, you know, and isn't, and it it wouldn't necessarily even have to be like a solid fence. I mean, you know, you can, there's ways to do that where you're mixing, just that it would provide initially some more of that coverage that people really, I think everybody would really like to see while allowing for the for the growth time, so.
I think if council wants to go that direction, we can explore options with the applicant. I'd probably want to bring it back to you, you know, just to make sure if it meets the intent. And we could do, you know, we could continue it for another couple of weeks and come back. So I think that I would hesitate to assume that I would get that, we'd get that right without your, without your guidance.
Councilmember Most, did you want to offer that as a friendly amendment or how?
Yes, I would like to offer that as a friendly amendment.
Mayor Proton Maloney, do you accept that?
I don't, because I don't know what it means. It's a little undefined for me, so I don't accept that amendment.
All right. Councilmember Most, did you have any other comments?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. And I really appreciate the conversation, and it looks like there are no other folks in the queue with comment. I I do think from the discussion, it's clear that I'll be voting no. I think it's clear that the screening is inadequate. And I hope that the business is successful, and I I really appreciate that you're bringing something forward. But a lot of times, a business may last somewhere on the order of five to ten years. And so the entire duration that this business may be operating, the screening will not be in place. And we're responsible for providing screening in a special review use from this exact type of use. So I don't find that we've come up with an adequate solution. I understand what the landscape architect was talking about. I understand the reality of the trees, but we're talking about using this as a screening from day one that provides the community the buffer from this type of use. And I think we failed to come up with a solution. So that, it's the materials of construction and the issues with the setback are the predominant reasons that I'll be voting against the motion this evening. Any other discussion from members? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. I'll ask City Quick News for a roll call vote. Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
No.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries, and that takes us to our next agenda item this evening, which is our sustainability update. And so we'll have two parts to this municipal energy efficiency upgrades and then community energy efficiency up update. So we'll take the two presentations and public comment and council questions and action together. So there won't be two separate periods, just so everybody knows when their time to come. And so I'll turn it over to Katie Baum, our sustainability specialist. Councilmember, oh, I apologize. Councilmember Fahey, did we want to take a break since it's eight o'clock? Let's take a ten-minute break before we go on to the next agenda item.
Thank you.
It's eight oh eight, and so we'll be back. I think I said a ten-minute break, but is a five-minute break okay with everyone? We'll take a ten-minute break. I see some faces, so we'll be back at eight eighteen. See you soon. As we get folks back, we'll get started. All right, we have a quorum. So I'll just reintroduce the topic that we're moving to for everyone's benefit. We're, we're going to have a sustainability update. The two topics are municipal energy efficiency upgrades and community energy efficiency update. And so we'll take both of those together and we'll have a staff presentation from Katie Baum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Katie Baum, Sustainability Coordinator. We'll kind of kick off with the municipal energy efficiency first and then we'll move into the community. We do have a presentation with the community piece, just because there's a little bit more to cover. And it, and it kind of bounces a little bit more from topic to topic. So I will dive into that municipal here first. So as some background, in 2019, City Council advanced to its commitment to climate action by unanimously adopting clean energy and carbon emission reduction goals for the municipality. Those two goals were to meet all of Lewisville's municipal electric needs with 100% carbon free sources by 2025, as well as reducing core municipal GHG emissions by core, we're specifically looking at energy consumption at city facilities as well as fuel, fuel use by our fleet. So those are those scope one emissions that we're really looking at for our core. So we are, our goal is to reduce those core emissions annually below the 2016 baseline through 2015. In coordination with these goals, 600,000 was allotted in 2021 budget for energy efficiency upgrades at municipal facilities. On July 20th, 2021, staff shared initial information on those efficiency upgrades as well as energy efficiency efforts to date, planned efficiency upgrades, renewable energy alternatives and proposed work on fleet electrification. So a lot of work on that July 20th meeting. Council directed staff to continue moving forward with the energy efficiency upgrades and to also explore future improvements around energy efficiency as well as some of the renewable energy pieces at, at facilities. So staff is here tonight to provide an update on that work. Since the July staff meeting, multiple projects have been prioritized and are underway within the packet. You can see that that table on table one, current projects primarily focus on LED conversion and lighting. And those are primarily because, you know, you have a relatively high rate on return on those kinds of projects and they're, they're relatively easy to implement and you can do those really quickly and effectively. So the police and municipal court projects are due to begin in 2022 to kind of pair with CIP that the capital improvement that's happening at the police department. Staff is, excuse me, sorry. Staff has experienced delays in projects due to some ongoing supply chain limitations that are pretty much outside of our control as though, although we try our best staff capacity and then also timing of other facility capital improvement projects. Initial projects do have an estimated 166,000 kilowatt hours in annual energy savings. That's approximately 13, approximately 1400 and or 14,000 annual electricity savings in total on those initial projects we've provided. It's about a payback period of 5.7 years. So again, a relatively quick turnaround and then we'll just start seeing annualized cost savings as well as energy savings. Provided in the packet are both the table outlining the immediate projects as well as the full energy efficiency upgrade list attached. Staff will continue this 2021 efficiency projects in 2022 and continue to kind of align those upgrades and improvements with additional CIP work. As to, and then we're shifting quickly into the renewable energy piece. So as of March 2020, the city has already achieved that first goal of ours on the climate action municipal goals, meeting all of Lewis, Lewisville's municipal electric needs with 100% carbon free by 2025. So successfully achieved that goal five years before schedule. Through subscriptions through XL Energy Renewable Connect and Wind Source programs. These programs are beneficial. They, they do come at a premium. However, the city is able to maintain the renewable energy credit or essentially be able to account for that renewable percentage and claim that renewable percentage. There's a lot of Excel programming that we do participate in as a city that does add a lot to renewable portfolios and supports Excel actually in their certified renewable percentage. They are beneficial. We just can't mean, we just can't claim those recs. So it's just a little bit different. In 2020, the cost of Renewable Connect and Wind Source subscriptions to cover all of the city's electricity was approximately $74,000. Staff worked with Excel to reduce its annual wind source subscription to accommodate the recent change in Excel's grid renewable percentage, or they like to call it the CRP. So I might refer to it as the CRP. And that is now at 31%. In 2019, that was at a 21%. So that's a pretty significant increase on our, on our certified renewable. Basically what that means is every time you're plugging in to the, to the wall, you can guarantee that 30% of the electricity coming out is from carbon free resources. Staff expects the new subscription for 100% in 2022 to drop to 54,000 annually because of that added CRP. The city also participates in community solar gardens in Boulder County, power purchase agreements and onsite solar at our water treatment and our wastewater treatment through Excel Solar Rewards programs. As I mentioned previously, these do not provide the city with that, the ability to claim that renewable. However, participating does support, you know, the overall decarbonization of the grid as well as this local additionality. So kind of dialing in more specifically at the rec and senior center. In July, that seemed to be a point of interest for council. So we wanted to bring back some more, some more information on, you know, some feasibility around onsite solar as we know that has been of interest. So currently the rec center does operate on 100% carbon free, again, purely through that wind source premium. Wind source is that premium credit on electricity consumption. So it is directly related to how much energy the facility consumes. The overall cost, subscription cost in 2020 to be 100% renewable at the rec center was $21,168. To account for Excel's increased CRP, again, that subscription is going to be reduced in 2021 by 30%. That is just going to continue to drop annually as Excel's CRP continues to grow. So you're going to see continued decline in that wind source cost. We've also received some recent information on the new Renewable Connect programming that Wind Source is actually going to be absorbed under. And that Wind Source premium is actually going to be dropped from $2 or sorry, from two to point one five. So it's actually going to be even cheaper on Wind Source than we initially thought as they're dropping that percent, that premium rate. So separately, this recreation, the rec center has participated in a power purchase agreement since 2016. It provides a specific allocation of offsite solar for credit on Excel utility billing there. And there's a lot more within the packet on that. That is specifically at an array out in Weld County. So it does buy into that PPA agreement. Again, we can't claim that renewable. However, it has its, a myriad of all, you know, additional benefits. Staff consulted with Namaste Solar for rough costs and production estimate for an onsite solar installation at the rec center. At a high level, the rec center roof could accommodate 731 modules at 332 KW of solar or kilowatt of solar. The system of this size would produce approximately 475,000 KWH per year in year one and approx, and cost approximately 760,000 to build or to develop on top of the roof. We evaluated the onsite solar in a similar approach as to the ground mount solar that we currently have at the waste and the water treatment facilities, which is a lease to purchase approach. So with a simple ROI, a very simple ROI with a lot of assumptions, it does indicate we could see a payback period in about 16.3 years at the current rate. Why that's a lot farther along than some of our ground mount solar is because the rebates and the tax credit that was once available back when we built in 2013 do not exist any longer in the same capacity. So we wouldn't see the drastic reduction in upfront cost that we did back in 2013 when we first built that ground mount. Although the city would not retain the recs, the installation would still contribute to Excel CRP through the Solar Rewards program. You know, additional benefits to onsite solar include, you know, leading this leading by example, reduced transmission and distribution losses, enhanced resiliency and reduced building emissions. Staff finds that the city's Renewable Connect and Wind Source subscription, subscriptions continue to be the most cost effective and feasible to implement in order to achieve 100% carbon free electricity. And with that, staff does recommend moving forward with the planned efficiency upgrades as budgeted and to bring back recommendations for municipal energy of energy efficiency renewable. of energy efficiency, renewable energy initiatives, as well as fleet transition for the twenty twenty three and twenty fourteen budget based on council's feedback. And I'm happy to answer any and all questions, and we also have Director Koar with us as well um, to answer any questions on the municipal side, unless you wanted me to keep moving.
Well, I'll just take a pause right there. Any council members have questions on the list of projects that count, that is in this, in the packet? And there was a lot more detail on the programs that Katie described in the packet for folks at home who want to read more about what we're doing. Any questions on the plan? And um, Councilmember Most, I know you've been tuned in and so you're probably very well aware of all of this, but council has given direction to staff to improve the energy efficiency and, and uh, improve the sustainability of our municipal buildings. So that's what, where this topic came from. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Katie, for a lovely presentation. You got to give a lot of good information. Um. I am still in favor of putting solar panels on top of the Rec Center. Also, at Public Works, when that issue comes up. Because we'd be generating our own power that would be entirely green, we wouldn't be moving it anywhere, we'd be using it right where it's generated. And it would be a source of backup power, particularly if we had uh, uh, backup battery storage. In case of an emergency, if our power system goes down, for whatever reason, as it did in Texas for freezing, we would still have energy and we could still operate. I just, I, I just prefer the idea, even if it costs more initially, to provide our own power at the Rec Center. So, that's my.
Um, other council members have questions or comments on uh, the list of uh, energy efficiency upgrades for city facilities that was provided before we go on to the second part? I just want to make sure that um, the, the Kurt's Department, the Director Koar and his department knows how committed we are to these things. So this is sort of a down payment that we did this year, and we have the two-year budget cycle coming up next year. So I think in the context of framing our goals for the next, you know, two-year budget cycle ideas like Councilmember Fahy's idea, transformational ideas and other improvements um, to our infrastructure, our city infrastructure will come forward, but this is a great down payment. Thanks for putting this together on short notice. Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo your comment. Uh, appreciating what the, the, the staff is doing as far as, you know, looking at where we can make investments that really make a difference. Um, you know, to me, these are, these are investments. And one of the things I really like about uh, the list of projects is giving us an idea of the impact. You know, for me, that is, that is the motivation for doing this. How can we reduce our footprint? Um, and by saying it's three years or five years, you know, based upon some analysis, I really appreciate that data. Um, because for me, that really enforces the reason to do the investments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So I hope, I know it's a late hour and so our enthusiasm may not have totally come through for the staff members, but um, thank you for getting these programs going as quickly as possible, and we'll keep talking about the next steps, like Councilmember Fahy's pushing us toward uh, in the new year with the new budget process, so we can fund those good projects. So thank you all. And then Katie, will you take us to the next portion? And I'll take public comment on both of these portions altogether, just so everybody in the public knows when they'll get a chance.
All right. Let me get my screen share up. Can everybody see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um. All right, perfect. So next on the docket, we'll be going over the community energy piece of the sustainability update. There we go. All right. In twenty nineteen, City Council advances commitment to climate action um, by adopting not only municipal but also community-wide clean energy and carbon emission reduction goals for the municipality and larger community. The community climate action goals are as follows. Generate seventy five percent of Lewisville's residential and commercial industrial electric needs from carbon-free sources by twenty thirty. Reduce core community greenhouse gas emissions annually below the twenty sixteen baseline through twenty thirty. On March nine, ninth, twenty twenty one, staff shared information on the community's current energy consumption and additional strategies to reduce energy use and or expand renewable inter- integration and various funding sources like a climate action tax. On the left side um, of the presentation, you can kind of see, you know, a timeline all the way back from twenty eighteen on how we've been progressing through a lot of this climate action work and really where we are today. So council directed in that conversation in, in March to continue exploring options to increase energy efficiency and renewable energy across the community. And to really provide a clear image or a clear picture on what this, on what programming could really look like. Um, council also asked the Lewisville Sustainability Advisory Board to further study the topic um, and follow up with the city and county of Denver to learn more about a potential excise tax on energy consumption to fund sustainability efforts, and if that may be revisited in twenty one or twenty two. To continue this conversation, staff is providing an update tonight on the renewable energy efficiency and renewable programs um, that we really think can take us, you know, can start providing good services for the community as well as, you know, um, really helping us on our way to achieve that, that top goal. Um, and staff has provided a gap analysis based on the city's current energy consumption and Excel's projected renewable energy integration. So we'll quickly kind of go through those main goals that we do have. Um, so the first goal, reduce core community greenhouse gas emissions annually below the twenty sixteen baseline through twenty thirty. We are on track for this goal. Um, community-wide, um, our electricity and our natural gas consumption decreased from, in twenty twenty from our twenty nineteen. A lot of this is coming from the cleaner grid that I mentioned in the first presentation on the C R, on Excel C R P. Um, which is really, really working to reduce that greenhouse gas emission. So we saw electricity and natural gas consumption decrease, and we're also seeing an increase on that cleaning of the grid. So here is a general trend summary. This is based on actuals. Um, so this is an overview of our um, energy emissions specifically looking at electricity, natural gas, we are not looking at, in, at, at fuel or transportation fuel in this. Purely looking at building consumption um, since twenty fifteen. So you can see that we are seeing this pretty steady trend downward um, based off of that natural gas and electricity consumption. And I would also like to point out that we are seeing this decrease, even though our overall residential and building premises are increasing. So we're seeing more building and development, however, we are still seeing a downward trajectory in energy emissions, which I think does speak to a lot of the work that the community is doing. So the second goal is generating seventy five percent of Lewisville's residential and commercial industrial electric needs from carbon resources by twenty thirty. Um, we are currently not on track to achieve this goal, even considering the, um, Excel Energy's sixty percent C R P by twenty thirty. Um, if we continue on a business as usual trajectory for estimated consumption growth um, as well as looking at our participation rates year over year in some of the renewable connects, wind source and on, and net metering programs. We will still fall short by approximately eight percent of that twen, of that seventy five percent by twenty thirty goal. Here is um, some renewable energy gap projections. So again, we're really looking at that seventy five percent. Um, and where we are, as you can see, the vast majority of this renewable energy gap or this renewable portfolio comes from Excel C R P. Um, so you can really see that, this is, that's that light blue here. Um, and then our net metering, so that onsite solar that is not going through Excel Solar Rewards programming is the orange. The gray is Renewable Connect, and then that yellow is the wind source. Um, so this does um, take into um, take into consideration annual estimated growth um, in consumption year over year, as well as this gradual incline in C R P that we're seeing from Excel. So the overall question, you know, and, and we talked about this um, quite a bit back in um, back when we presented it to Marge is, is what can we do to achieve, achieve our goals? And so really, you know, when we're looking at climate action, we're really looking at renewable energy, energy efficiency and electrification. Those are really the three pillars. Um, at least in the built environment, right? Because you also have this transportation piece that we're leaving out currently. Um, but these are the three biggest components of this climate action kind of conversation. And so underneath renewable energy, you see, you know, solar rebates, incentives, enhanced resources um, pursuit of community-wide or expanded Excel programming, um, which the city's done a lot of concerted work with Excel over the years um, and other partnerships or investments. Under energy efficiency, again, you see a lot of rebates, enhanced resources, pilot programming, um, and then this benchmarking policy and support. There was also, we did also previously have the building code um, piece under here as a potential strategy, but we can check that off the list as we've already progressively moved on that one. Um, electrification is another piece of the pie. Electrification is critical to the overall, you know, emissions reductions, you know, strategy. Um, you know, as the, it, it really hinges on the cleaning of the grid. However, it is a key strategy. It's a little counterintuitive because you do see energy consumption increases when you also do the electrification. So it doesn't quite look the same in terms of performance metrics, but it is a key piece. So staff put together some potential programming, and again, this is primarily focused on programming. It doesn't include any, any projects, so we're not really evaluating community solar gardens um, within this kind of breakdown. We're, we're, we're really just looking at programming right now. Those projects would involve a lot more, you know, scoping and R F P work and that kind of work that um, you know, staff can definitely do if that's council, um, if that's the direction council wants to go. So from the programming and within the packet, there's a more effective um, project matrix that includes, you know, all of the impacts um, from economic vitality, equity to energy efficiency and G H G reduction um, as well as a lot of speci- specificity on how these programs would actually operate or run um, and also cost initial funding estimates. Um, however, in, in year one from all the programs that were included, um, we could anticipate about a, a million K W H reduction electricity and five hundred thousand K W H in new solar production.
That, this is actually, hey, um, could you go back a few slides to the one that just showed we're not on track on the goal for um, electric generation? Yeah. So um, I understand what data you're using and what you're saying here, and I appreciate that. What effort have you made to be able to capture the amount of electricity that's, that's on the customer side of the meter from Excel? Because I know in the data they share with us that they don't have access to that. So like if a corporation puts in panels and, and electricity never hits the meter, they're making it for themselves. But Excel doesn't account for that in their renewable number. So how have we tried to estimate how much of that is happening in residential units and non-commercial units within the city? And then how does that play into how we can improve the quality of the data in this number?
Yes, so, so you're spot on. The, the, when you're looking at before the meter, it's actually going to show up here, not here, if that makes sense. So basically, they're not being charged for the energy they're producing. And they're not, so it's not going to show up in our community energy report as um, energy billed to Lewisville. So that number that they're producing, that amount that they're producing, is being essentially offset in our total consumption.
Well, so I, I guess.
Does.
Um, so like i- in Excel's total number, they don't know how much there, there are, there are a number of customers that they don't know how much renewable energy is being produced on their side. So like, let's say that we uh, took, this is a hypothetical, it's a ridiculous scenario just to just to illustrate an example. Um, like if we were to take City Hall off the grid, which is not my I'm just, then, then Excel would have no information about our, our amount of renewable energy, and we would still be producing it. And that might be, you know, a good project to implement. So how, as we do these projects over time, and they've already been happening for years and years, I know. I see some residents on that I know have done things to their homes to take advantage of some of the things that you can do. Um, how are we going to track that? And then how can we try to estimate what has already happened? So that we know how much um, renewable energy is on the customer side of the meter.
The information that Excel does provide us um, is how many installations have occurred? Um, how many net metering installations have occurred um, in the reporting year? Um, so we do know how many residential versus business installations, at least on the net metering side, not the solar reward side, are occurring. Um, so I think that's a good indicator of, that's a pretty good indicator of progress, at least on the installation side. So how many permits are we seeing coming through? Excel has been able to provide us with this production capacity figure from net metering. Um, they have not in the past, um, but they did give us this um, as this, this kind of production capacity that they're seeing or that they're reading, rebating back through solar banking. Um. So we do see some of that figure. And then, but I do understand what you're saying on how do you, how are you capturing that before meter amount? Um, and I, I guess I'll just, uh, you know, again, that, that overall we might not be able to say exactly how much is coming off of net metering versus how much is just occurring in um, consumption reduction, but it is going to show up. We will see a reduction up here, because it, it's not going to even count as production or consumption through reporting, because it's being taken off at the beginning.
Right. All right. Thank you. Mayor Proton Maloney?
That's a, this is a great question. You know, it's almost like a multi-dimensional um, graph to be able to show this, because the net metering line there, if I understand that correctly, that's only the difference between what is generated and used and what the spillover is. So in my case, through the summer months, my solar panels generate more than I use. And so that's actually a negative number. Um, so I understand the whole, you know, the top of that chart you have there is less because it doesn't take into account my usage through all those months. But we're not getting credit for it. I, I think, I think that's your point, right, Mayor?
Well, it's not, I'm not, I, I, maybe I'm saying the same thing as you. I wouldn't have used the word credit, but just in that goal that we've set for having sixty percent of the uh, electricity citywide, or what, I, I don't remember the goal, but if we go back a page. Um, if we don't come up with a way to measure this, we won't know if we're meeting our goal or not, I guess, is my point. Like, we won't have data necessary to know whether or not we're meeting our goal.
But I, I completely agree. Um, what's interesting though is, is, you know, I have a net meter and a meter. And um, Excel knows how much is on both. So I'm not sure why they can't add this into the calculation. That, that mystifies me.
Well, I think, you know, in the past, some of it is proprietary between them and their customers. And so if we could get all of the customers to sign an agreement that they can share the data with us, I think they would. I think some of it is about the proprietary nature of their relationship with their customer.
Oh, okay. Well, that may be true, but um, I don't know what the right word to use, whether it's credit or whatever you want to call it, but um, I, I think our amount of, of generation is, is certainly higher than we're getting this information from Excel. Thank you.
Um, I guess to both, I mean, what we're both saying, I think Mayor Proton Maloney is, this would be something worth exploring to figure out a way that we could either find out the actual amount or a way to estimate uh, based on, you know, the amount of rooftops that, you know, we can count physically or something. It would, it would be good to either get an actual number or an estimate for that.
Oh, I, I would be happy to work with staff to give them my numbers if they want to use that as informative in the, you know, in some calculation.
And maybe we have some other um, large industrial users that would participate as well. Um, that could help uh, inform that conversation. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to kind of follow along this whole theory about not really knowing what our reduction is. And my point is, do we know how many people have switched from gas? Gas appliances, a gas furnace or water heater to electric, which increases. Our electricity use. But decreases the gas use, which is, in my view, more detrimental to the climate. And so can we find out? What the impact would be or has been on people switching their home appliances or. And even cars to electric. I mean, I have an electric vehicle, so my electric bill goes up because I drive an electric car. But, but then I'm not going to the gas station, so. So it kind of balances out.
Thanks, Member Fahy. That'd be interesting to find out as well. Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, I think, appreciate all the comments. I think when I was looking at this graph for the, the first time. I just saw it as a rectangle with like the percentages changing. And I think when we came back to it, I realized, oh, no, no, yeah, there's actually a scale on the left and the top just isn't moving very much, which I think is to. Katie's point right is that this would probably be going up faster over time, the top line, if it weren't for. Some of the actions to, to, to reduce the bill on the customer side. So, you know, I do think we're probably, we're getting the benefit, but it isn't the perfect representation. We, and it's hard to know how much, right? Like. Oh, would it have been up at the 250 mark had there not been all these customer actions to decrease this? And so the percentage would be lower. Because the top would be so much higher, but gosh, we've done such a good job, or maybe we haven't, right? So that. Mystery is frustrating because it's, we don't know how much we're taking off the top. But I do think it is, it, whatever we're doing, it's improving. The percentage, right? It's, it is getting us there faster because we're not using as much from Excel. As people are doing more solar and things like that. Yeah, I think, and I, I guess the. The other thing I'll just point to is I find it remarkable that. In 2018, it was like 100% non-renewable. And so that's, that's a, you know, huge shift. And so. I think that, that's fantastic news, but yeah, this, this line isn't going up at the, the rate we're looking for, but. This is a great report and I appreciate it. And thanks for thinking about all those details, Mayor.
Thank you. So Katie, do you want to wrap up your slide so we can take public comment on this? Thank you for letting us ask a few questions. That was helpful.
Yes, of course. And I'll, I'll work with Excel. I'm trying to get us some, some finer numbers. So as, so after. The potential programming and estimated impacts, and you can find that as attachment. LSAB or Sustainability Advisory Board. Took councils kind of task to heart and did a lot of great background work. And really reached out and did a lot of work with the city and county of Denver to really understand. Understand the route that Denver ended up taking on the sales tax approach. To support climate mitigation and adaptation projects and programs. So as some very initial background, on November 3rd, 2020, Denver voters approved Measure 2A. Which increased sales, our sales tax rate by 0.25%. Initially, that measure was proposed as an excise tax on electricity and natural gas. And that consumption was to be collected on Excel billing. Noted was the opposition to the excise tax by Excel Energy and the potential of legal action. Denver staff also noted some equity concerns they had with the excise tax approach. And the potential, or sorry, and the high administrative burden as a disadvantage to the excise tax. There's a lot more information within the packet that I'm happy to. Go over, but that's a very brief kind of update on the sales tax versus the excise tax. And so where Denver is today, so on November of 2021, just, just, just. A couple of weeks ago, and one year after the passage, Denver did release a very robust climate protection fund. Five-year plan, and it outlines the investment strategies for the fund. And it does really focus on equity, this kind of just transition as we look into kind of this climate future. And the framework of stakeholder engagement as well. The Sustainability Advisory Board did a lot of work on developing and launching. A residential and commercial survey in August 2021, and they also created an engagement webpage using the Engage Lewisville platform. Through that, we did have approximately seven, 70 residential responses. And we didn't quite have the commercial response that we were hoping for, but we did get a lot of good residential survey feedback. Do want to say this is not, the, the response rate was not statistically significant. However, it did provide a little bit of feedback with which LSAB could pull together some, some information. And so. Residents really identified the three most important roles of the city is to provide incentive programs and rebates. Enacting policy and educating and informing residents on how to get involved. The two top climate actions respondents were looking to pursue is electric vehicle purchasing and participating in renewable energy programming. And 57% of response, respondent said they were somewhat likely or very likely to support a community-wide sustainability fee. So as recommendation, staff recommends continuing to study strategies to meet the community's climate goals. And to bring back recommendations for the 2022 council work plan and 2023, 2024 budget based off of council's feedback. With that, I am happy to answer any and all questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Katie. We'll take this time to turn it over to our members of the public. To let us know what they think about the presentation and provide us any comments or feedback. Members of the public. Joshua Cooperman.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman again. I live at 216 Griffith Street. I would like to say that I still strongly support the development and implementation of a climate action tax in Lewisville. I would favor an excise tax on electricity and gas as well as waste and water bills. I think this is the best idea. Because it would directly incentivize reductions in electricity use, gas use, waste and water use. I think there are some very good reasons why we should implement a, a climate action tax. In particular, this past year, there have been quite a flurry of reports on the state of Earth's climate and our efforts to address climate change. And these reports pretty much definitively show that we need to do a lot more and we urgently need to do a lot more. Katie has identified some great ways that we could use the revenue from a climate action tax. And as she notes. There are a lot of other great ideas that we could implement to use the revenue of a climate action tax. I will make some recommendations to city council about how we could use the revenue from a climate action tax. And I believe that the Sustainability Advisory Board will also make some further recommendations. On how we could use the revenue from a climate action tax. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Sherry Summer.
Sorry about that. Thanks so much for your time. When I was thinking about the sales versus the excise tax, one of the. Reservations that Denver had about the ex, the excise tax was. Fairness. I'm, I'm a little tired. I'm losing the word. But I don't see why a sales tax would be a more equitable solution. So I think that would need to be looked at. I personally did not see the LSAB survey. And so perhaps if they cast their net a little wider, maybe I just missed it. Maybe it would be good to cast their net a little wider to get a larger sample, if that be possible. And I think it'd be really interesting to find out not only why people support it, but why they wouldn't support it. And really work on those issues in order for this to succeed. I, I, I think it's a great idea to promote this. Kind of work and, and I hope that it is successful. Thank you. I see the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Tiffany Boyd.
Good evening, Council. Tiffany Boyd, 550 Grant Avenue. I agree with Josh Cooperman about the excise tax on energy, waste and water. I feel like this is a nice. I mean, all of this is tricky, right? We need to come up with the right combination of sticks and carrots. We need to. Incentivize people and we need to. Put things in place so that people have to comply. We're in the middle of a climate crisis and. As a city government, we need to come up with ways to hold our citizens accountable if they're not going to hold themselves accountable. I feel like we need to get some advice from our city attorney about. Maybe what happened with Denver, right? How and why? Did Excel have? Have the authority to shut down Denver's attempts at this excise tax? I really feel like we shouldn't be afraid of what happened in Denver, but we should roll up our sleeves and figure out. Why? I mean, this, this is something that regionally we need to be cooperating on with the rest of our Denver metro. Comrades, and I don't feel like we should be bullied by Excel. I feel like we need to figure out. What is best for our communities in the middle of a climate crisis and that we shouldn't back down. From the idea of an excise tax just because Denver. Was threatened by Excel. I feel like our city attorney should help us look into that a little bit. And study this further. And I give back the rest of my time. Thank you.
You're muted, Mayor.
I said so many beautiful things. Thank you very much for the public comments. And so seeing no other public comments, we'll come back over to council members. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. You know, I've been in support of some time of, of finding ways for us as a city to provide. 100% renewable energy for every resident. And every business. We had a proposal. About a year and a half ago now that relied upon renewable energy credits. We didn't. End up moving forward with that proposal. I know there are concerns about the use of renewable energy credits. But I, I really would like to understand more about sort of. Not just how we meet our 75% goal, but how do we meet our 100%, you know, what I think of as 100% goal. And, and one of the best ways, what are the best ways to do that? You know, we, we, we talk a lot about sort of. Not wanting to rely upon Excel. And those concerns, I also recognize that, you know, Boulder went through a very painful, very expensive and ultimately. Not successful process of municipalization. I don't think we want to go down that road. So given that Excel is sort of the dance partner that we have. You know, how can we hold them accountable? How can we work with them? How can we, you know, appropriately utilize the resources? That we have collectively in order to, to increase our mix. You know, is it renewable energy credits? Is it putting solar panels on the rec center? I would really, very much like to know. You know, if we were to do something like that, a large installation, how much would that change our overall mix in the city? If we move to electric vehicles, you know, as a city, how much does that change our overall kind of? That's, and that's not even the, on the electric. But, but the point is, the point is there, I think there's a lot, there's a lot there, and I don't feel like I have the right information at this point to know how we can really. Meet the goals. I appreciate Katie's presentation. I know there were some recommendations in there. Which were helpful, but I feel like we need a lot more specificity. In, 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 in sort of mapping out the, the future in terms of meeting those, meeting those particular goals.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Katie, I had a question. Boulder has, I believe, what they call a carbon tax. Isn't that an excise tax that they put in place? And that was something I believe was done 10 years ago or something along those lines. So now that's something Excel does not support. Is that what, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, it is an excise tax. It is on electricity and natural gas consumption. It was. Start, I believe started in 2009. I believe that's the correct date, please. I, I, I'll, I'll double check on that figure, but I do believe it was in 2009. And, you know, in our conversations with Excel, they have not seemed keen to perpetuate that program. With other communities. You know, we, we hear quite a lot, you know, that they, they, they do not want to operate as if they are a bank. And then, and then that excise tax. Process and how they go through that with Boulder, I think, kind of is set up in this remittance kind of schedule. But that is, I mean, it is an excise tax and, and I think that's the, the interesting part between Denver. And Boulder, you know, and that distinction by what they decided to move forward with. Because Excel did, did do the excise tax once. They just, they haven't committed to doing it again.
Yeah, and they, and they may not want to build it in the future. Sorry, Mayor, you got a comment?
I, I just was going to say, I think the member of the community that talked about the city attorney, I think really it is a question of. You know, do we have the legal authority to ask the voters if they want to approve a tax on a specific good or service as a home or municipality? You know, I think it's a legal question that at the, at the council would just have to decide if that's worth pursuing.
Yeah, I mean, I. So in line with Counsel Brown's comments, I mean, I, I, I feel like I want more information on what, you know. The staff recommendation of moving forward, you know, with the upgrades, but also. You know, looking at, at future initiatives, I, I look for more information so that we can make investments that make a difference. I. I think there's unanimous support on council for that, but. You know, funding this, you know, I think an excise tax makes perfect sense to me. When you're doing a sales tax, it's, it's. It's not directly charging those who are utilizing the energy. So. You know, I'd like to see it be more direct if possible. So I'd like to at least explore understanding that better, but. Katie, thank you for all the updates. Really appreciate it and all the information.
So thank you, everyone. And so out of this, I, I think what we'll need to do for next steps as a council is look at this. On the, within the context of the other things in the work plan and see where it falls. And so I'll look forward to that discussion with everyone. I'll just turn to city manager and make sure we don't need to give any other direction on these topics to me.
No, I don't believe so. I think you've given us some good direction for what we can start looking at next. And. Yeah, I think we'll incorporate it into the work plan discussion.
Thank you very much. And so that takes us to our next topic this evening, which is the discussion direction of our 2022 legislative agenda. And so Emily Hogan, the Assistant City Manager for Communications and Special Projects, will take us through this. Emily, it's great to see you.
Hi, it's wonderful to see everyone. I hope you're all doing great and it's. Fantastic to be back on such a special night when I was getting new council members sworn in. So good evening, Mayor and council members. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Great. Um, staff is presenting the draft 2022 City of Lewisville Legislative Agenda for discussion and direction. The legislative agenda, let me actually, let me. Up my presentation real quick. Okay, can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Okay. So the legislative agenda serves as a guiding document, the city's engagement in legislative affairs. Prior to and during the upcoming legislative session. It is informed by the city's strategic goals, current priorities, and any challenges or barriers that the city may be currently facing. Other priorities have been identified by legislative delegation members, professional trade groups. Municipal or local partners, stakeholders, advocacy groups, constituents and other city partners. Staff has provided a redline copy of the 2022 legislative agendas drafted. It's based on the 21 legislative agenda with minor changes and updates. Or new policy areas that we expect to see in the upcoming session. I am happy to go through all significant changes by section, or I can answer any specific questions. That council may have on the proposed language.
Thank you very much. And so I'll turn it to members of the public for any public comments on this agenda topic this evening. Seeing none, I'll take it back over to council for discussion. Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Emily, it's nice to have you back. So here's a topic that I guess I would like to see it somewhere in our legislative agenda. in our legislative agenda. One of the things that Director Watson's not with us tonight from, from finance, but we're working on the, we, staff is working on the sales and use tax system sets, you know, to support the collection of sales taxes and, you know, especially dealing with those that are internet based and so forth. You know, somewhere in this, I guess I would like to see something that we support the legislature properly funding that to not only get the system in place, but to help municipalities and counties successfully implement the system for their, for their, you know, their cities, counties, whatever. So that's just one addition. I'd like to see.
Any, any opposition to that addition? It seems like it's an excellent proposal. All right. So can we ask staff to draft something in that?
That would, that would be great. I would suggest to talk to Dr. Watson, who probably has the proper terminology around that. Thank you, Mayor.
You, I didn't mean to cut you off if you have other topics. I just wanted to get that one buttoned up before you went to the next.
No, I appreciate that. The, the rest of it, I think, looks really good, and I appreciate the changes. So that was the only addition that I had. Thank you.
Mayor Protamaloni, not to put you on the spot, and you're welcome to just defer it right back to me, but if you want to just describe to the council, there's some language in here to help support one of our local businesses, Pro's Closet, with some legislation we're working on. Do you want to give a quick summary to folks around that?
I, I could. It will be more than 25 words or less. So we have a significant business in town called the Pro's Closet, and they're in the business of buying used bikes, refurbishing and reselling them. Their, their current budget for 2022 is about $70 million. And the average price of a bike is about $4,000. So it gives you an idea. They're in a whole warehouse out at the the CTC. There's an issue in our revised statutes that because there are reseller and the reseller statutes point at the pawnbroker statutes, they're required for any bike that they buy in Colorado to hold it for 30 days before they can process it and sell it. So they buy bikes all over the world and they can get them in and immediately sell them as a, as a reseller. So we are working with Representative Tracy Burnett on some legislation to separate the secondhand dealers and pawnbroker revised statutes so they don't have to hold that much inventory for that long. And they have what I consider to be gold standard operating procedures and in taking verify, verifying that you own the bike and then doing a resale. So that's another thing. Thank you for bringing that up, Mayor. I hope that was somewhat clear.
And just ask if anybody has any questions for Mayor Protamaloni or questions about that topic. It's a new topic in our plan. All right. And any other comments or questions or additions from folks? So I have a couple topics to bring up. So the first one is just in that first section where we talk about, we, we've always had that statement in there around local control. So it says, "The city urges state officials to respect Colorado's tradition of local control and allow municipal officials to address local problems at the local level." I just want to really thank staff for the amendment kind of to the precursor to that, just that talks about how certain issues require statewide and multi-jurisdictional response, which is best through, which is best addressed through meaningful engagement with, and collaboration. I think that that somehow is reflecting that, you know, maybe handling a global pandemic at the local level is not the most appropriate. But I would like to add a sentence to that first bullet at the end. Sort of reframing that sentence that says like, while the city urges state officials to respect the tradition for local control, recognizing that the city supports the state setting minimum standards that communities have local authority to exceed. I think a lot of times, you know, if the state would set minimum building codes, minimum requirements for public health and safety, minimum requirements for like nuclear waste disposal, that we can go above and beyond if we want, that's great, but it is really helpful if the state sets a minimum bar so that there's parity among the communities. Is the group okay with making that modification? I think it's a clarification that will be meaningful in our lobbying. I see a bunch of thumbs up. So with no objection, we'll ask staff to make an amendment along those lines. The next topic is around, I, I read carefully the section on policing and public safety, public safety and justice. I really thank the staff for adding the things around mental health. This next topic is sensitive and important to have careful wording on. But the state has, the state has tried to react to bad policing, and I think they've made some very positive, meaningful changes, but in doing it, they acted very quickly. And some of the changes they've made have had some impacts on victims in a way that I think are unintended consequences. And that's so, you know, we saw last session that there were cleanup bills to some of their policing bills, and they, they, they may need to continue to work on some of the cleanup to the reform that's been made. And so I think we need to be proactive in our statement around continuing to refine the rules around municipal courts and policing to ensure that victims are protected and have rights. And I don't know that. I'm not offering that as the exact language, but I'm trying to offer that as a concept because we have heard from our local police and our local courts that there are some issues where you know, someone can commit a pretty serious offense without recourse at this point. So I think we want to be able to address that because I think community members expect that some of those crimes are addressed through the court process and that there is correction and that something is done. And then that the victim does have a way to either, you know, recover financial recovery for their property or whatever. And Councilmember Lay, maybe you can more articulately describe what I'm trying to describe. But I, I'm, I'm very proud of the state for taking action to correct bad policing, but I now think we need to look carefully and understand, are there any things that need further refinement to ensure that the outcomes are what we hope for? Councilmember Lay?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think actually you did a very nice job with that. I, I think those are, there are sensitive because we're balancing some very, very high profile bad actions of of certain police officers, and this happens. And it's not something that, that anybody wants to be putting up with and, and that we need to remedy. We have been fortunate, I think, in our town that, that we've, we've got a terrific chief and we have fewer of these problems, but that doesn't mean that things can't change. I think we are, we had a discussion recently, the mayor and I, with some folks and around in the municipal court system that maybe some of the tools that the legislature thought it was improving or you know, going to, to improve the, the law of folks and reduce the abuses, it may actually be creating unintended consequences that, some of which the mayor had mentioned. But, you know, taking away some of the, the power of other people in the system, like judges, to be able to leverage better behavior. And one of the primary characteristics of this small town character that we always talk about is that we are a safe community. And that needs to continue, and we need to do that thoughtfully, appropriately. I'm delighted with you, Mayor, that there's an emphasis in this legislative agenda on supporting mental health in law enforcement efforts because they're the first who are going to get called. Everybody talks a good game about how we need to get the police out of the, the business of mental health. But they're going to get called. And our police department is just doing wonderfully with the resources that we're giving. Others need to do that well, too. But anyway, there's, there are a lot of those kinds of changes, and I applaud the tinkering with the law to make it better and not just sort of have a pendulum swing one way or another.
So Emily, do you think that staff could take a, a try? This is very careful because we want to ensure, I, I, I think we want to say we're grateful and thankful for the work that's been done to improve law enforcement practices. And then, and we think there's opportunity to further refine that to ensure that we get it right. I mean, it was important they acted fast and, and I understand that sometimes when you act fast, then you have to go back and make corrections. I don't know the right way to say it, but I think that the, the nature of the conversation has described it, and then maybe, you know, between Gloria and yourself, you are the best linguists among us, so maybe you can come up with something for us.
We can certainly try.
Thank you, thank you. And then my last area is just an addition that was made in the land use development and revitalization section. I just don't think adding the language, including support for local transit oriented developments, adds anything to the document. So I think the bullet is clear on its own and inclusive of that type of development among others. And so I don't see any need to add that statement. I'm letting people read. I see one person who's found what I was talking about and is responding that that's fine with them. Other people are contemplating it. The one, I mean, I just, the more things we can actually take out of here, the better it is because our legislators will look at this in like a 30 second period of time. So the shorter we can make it, the better. The more concise we can make all of our statements, the better. Not seeing a lot of response from people. Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, it's funny. I just, I think like the blue sentence is more concise. I, I think you're right. It's, it's repetitive. And it's like, the city supports policies, investments that improve the coordination of land use and transportation, like that's TOD, right? The coordination of land use and transportation. It's like, so I, I think you're right that it's a bit repetitive, but I think on a quick read, you know, TOD is a buzzword that's like, yeah, got it. Instead of having to read the whole sentence and understand.
I think that that bullet is around, so like city, because we can do, cities have total authority to do TOD. So if my, like, when you're looking at this bullet, it's around like, what do we need the state to change in the state law to make things better? And it's to, from my perspective, this bullet is around regional cooperation. Like, we can do things within our city, but we cannot affect what they do in Superior or Lafayette or, and so this is to me incentivizing this regional planning idea so that you do transportation systems and planning together on a regional basis. So from my perspective, the, the focus of that sentence is really around like planning and regional cooperation. I just don't think the additional language adds anything.
So I'm reading as including support for locally approved. So if we, if we do transit oriented development, we want them to support us regionally to, to support our local developments, right? So like if, if, if transportation is regional and we are doing a transportation oriented development, we want them to support our project, right? Like if they got rid of the RTD bus station, not that the state anyways, I don't mean to complicate things, but it's like, well, that, that, that's going to hurt our transit oriented development if a regional transportation hub goes away.
Right, like when Northwest Rail wasn't built and we have a transit oriented development in downtown.
Without, right. So I mean, I don't mind the sentence. If you, if, if it really is removed, that's fine. I think it, it doesn't take away from it, but I, I get that it probably doesn't add a bunch. If anyone has strong opinions and.
I feel very strongly, if you don't mind taking it out. I, I just feel like that. I feel like that's in there for some reason, and I don't like it. Mayor Protamaloni.
You know, I, I, I think I know where you're coming from, Mayor, and I have the same reaction. When you put something in like transit oriented developments, then that's all they read in the whole sentence. You know, and this is, there's a lot more to this than just that. You know, whether, whether it be bike lanes or, you know, whatever it might be that supports, you know, that land use. Well, so I, I'm okay taking that out, you know.
Mayor, can I make a comment? This is Megan. I, I think it's fine to take it out. I just, to provide some context for folks around this is that, you know, a lot of the conversations around transportation funding have been really focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions and directly funneling more funding towards land use, transportation, you know, projects that are developed with sort of a comprehensive land use, transportation synergy to reduce vehicle miles traveled, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so I think that's really what we're getting at here is that the state legislature is actually looking at kind of funding, making more funding investments around projects like this. But I don't think that TOD language has to be in there. I think it's captured in the other language. So just a little context.
Okay. Councilmember Lay has his, he doesn't have a lot of energy around this face on. So I think with that.
That's totally what I was gonna say. That's exactly what I was gonna say. But no, I, I think wherever, you know, the problem with drafting and is that every time you put an including, nobody wants to stop the list, even though it's just like, it's not including everything. But, you know, so we pile on. So I, I'm with you, Mayor, as a general language matter. Maybe I have a little more energy around it, but not much.
All right. And so Councilmember Dickinson is not giving you too much heartburn to take it out?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. And let me just double check my notes. The last one, did we make a change to our statement on urban renewal? Emily, could you describe that a little bit? It looked great. Oh, it's about, it's, it's approximately the same. Okay, I'll leave, I'll leave that alone. Councilmember Brown, did you have something you wanted to bring up?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I noticed that there's some new language in there about unfunded mandates. I was wondering if there was a concern from staff that the state was looking to impose new unfunded mandates on us or what that, what you were trying to head off there.
Do you want me to speak to that, Emily?
I, you know, I think it's just, and Megan, I'll just, I'll make a brief comment, and then if you have anything specific. You know, I think it's just a general concern that seems to come up every year as we see, you know, new bills being approved is that we generally will face some, some mandates that aren't funded, like the, you know, sales tax simplification, you know, there's a lot of impact to local municipalities that we have to deal with with limited resources or, you know, not an additional source of revenue to help fund those. Megan, did you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, I, I, I agree. I think it's, as we reworked that section around kind of the local control concept to recognize some of the statements that the mayor had made earlier that, you know, there, there are certainly we, we want to, you know, preserve our, our local control and our home rule charter. And part of that that I think was kind of missing in that statement was around the unfunded mandates piece. And so I think as we reworked that section, just wanted to capture that, that's, that's something that does have an impact on us. And we determine how we, you know, expend our local funds. And so we wanted to just make sure that was reflected.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. I, I think the, sometimes language like that gets used by municipalities that have sort of different values than we do in order to oppose some of the, some of what the mayor was talking about, about state floors for certain policies. So I just want to be careful about how we utilize that language and sort of utilize it in our lobbying strategy. The other, the other question that I would, that I had is, I remember last year having a discussion about being in favor of lower cost healthcare options, more affordable health, quality healthcare options. Did I miss, this, this statement is based, or this legislative agenda is based on our twenty twenty one agenda, and I didn't see anything in there on that. Did I miss it?
I don't remember removing any sections, but it's very possible that I missed it from last year. So I will, let me see, I'll go back to the twenty twenty and see where that's at.
Well, and in any case, Councilmember Brown, are you proposing adding it? I mean, I think that's
I would like it to remain. Yeah, I mean, I I remember specifically bringing this up last year because it's like, I don't know, healthcare is my thing. So, and I wanted to make sure that we were supporting our local businesses and residents who are sole proprietor, sole proprietors who, you know, need to purchase healthcare on their own. And I remember we added it. So I was just, you know, would like to add, make sure that that's, that's in there and the same language we had last year was in there.
Yeah, I I I think you're right, Councilmember Brown. And I I wonder almost if it fell off in twenty twenty one and we didn't catch that. Because, yeah, so we'll go back because I think we did have a statement in there and and I don't see that we took it out either this year. So I don't know if it if we unintentionally lost it. We'll we'll get it back in there.
Yeah, and and so for, in the twenty twenty one agenda, it states the city supports access to quality and affordable healthcare for residents and businesses across Colorado.
Right. Is that in there now? Is that in the twenty twenty two version?
No, I I don't believe that's in there, so we can add it back in.
Can we add that back in? That'd be great. Thank you.
And I don't see any discussion on that. So we'll add that back in. Any other points, Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you. I'm I'm going to go back to the issue about the state mandates. Because that's, that's one of those ambiguous things in my mind where you don't want the state requiring us to do certain things. But on the other hand, there are some things that would be lovely as the mayor stated, if they did require them. And so it it's really a balancing act and I don't want to do anything that would have unintended consequences, I guess. So I'm I'm not sure how I feel about having that statement in there, I guess. Because it is kind of ambiguous.
Other folks want to weigh in on the mandate point, Councilmember Lay.
You know, this one, I don't have as much heartburn about it, mostly because I am worried about people like Councilmember Brown imposing, you know, all kinds of requirements on our localities from this perch over there in the state.
Not, not on the, not on the municipality.
That, though, Councilmember Brown. No, in in all seriousness, though, I wonder if there's a sort of middle ground that just talks about being cautious about the state unfunded mandates. Because, yeah, maybe it's nice for things to be imposed, but I I can't think of many things that I want imposed on the city of Louisville without some, you know, where we actually have to make some expenditure wi- without having some, some funds provided for that. I mean, I maybe there are some things like that, but I don't, I don't always. We, I think it's too abstract to say, well, we don't ever want any state, well, of course we do. Some things are are really important to be decided statewide, but I think I I don't know, I just don't have the level of heartburn. And I think from we we're, we're here to protect the city's fisc. And the more we can do that, I think the better. But I, you know, i- it's not going to make things rise or fall for me, but I do think taking out language on unfunded mandates, I I don't know that I really want to do that. I'd rather have it in there.
No, I I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Lay. I didn't, I didn't mean to to imply that we should necessarily take it out. I think it's just important for us to think about like what we consider to be an unfunded mandate would be Louisville needs to start taking care of roads that formerly the state took care of, right? That would be a huge burden on us, right? Without additional resources, we couldn't probably handle something like that. But there, there would be other things that other communities might use in this, use the word unfunded mandate. And and really, it's just sort of like a you know, a coordination among cities and didn't actually increase city expenditures in different ways. So I, I I wasn't, sorry, I didn't mean to open up a huge can of worms. I just didn't want to. Sometimes language gets loaded in particular ways and used in particular ways. But as long as we are all clear on sort of what the intent of that language is in our statements, then I'm I'm fine with it.
Mayor Pratimani? Oh, sorry. Did you change your mic?
I did. Thank you.
I think, so I think we'll leave it for this year, but we'll continue to think about that and probably on a case by case basis, I'm sure we'll have different opinions, right? When it's as Councilmember Fahey eloquently laid out, you know, some cases will have a different idea than that. We can always bring things up to talk about. So the last point on this one, seeing no other topics to change or amend or ask staff to change is around how we deliver our agenda. And the staff laid out some options for us. So I guess I would just like to propose maybe an alternate to to the options. I think that this is pretty important to meet in person with the legislators on, but I understand the issues around meeting in a large group. So maybe a subcommittee and the city manager could meet with the legislators on it. I would be more than happy to if the group's so inclined. I just think there's a few reasons why I think it's important to to get in front of them, to let them know we're willing to come down and testify, to kind of explain the nuance behind some of these things. And I just think a Zoom with twenty four people is just really hard to get some of these things across. And I'm just not sure that's a good use of anybody's time. Additionally, we have new maps that have been drawn. And so while it looks like we'll still have Tracy Burnett as our house rep, Sonia, this will be her last year as our senator, as our state senator, as we've been drawn into. My, my brain just went blank. Megan, wait, please help me. I I just was at a wedding that he was attending to and we were chatting. I'm I'm so sorry.
Senator Hickenlooper?
No, no. From Boulder. Well, whatever. We're in a new senate district.
Fen- Fenberg.
Fenberg, thank you. Steve Fenberg. Yeah, thank you very much, Councilmember Brown. Sorry, Steve, for getting your name on camera. We're in Senator Fenberg's district now, starting in twenty twenty three. So I do think it'll be important to like meet with Senator Fenberg, start getting in use to the city of Louisville being something that he's responsible for, kind of having those joint meetings with Sonia. So I just think doing it in person is really the going to be the best way to get that across. Maybe we could do something outside. You know, after the session altogether to get everybody meeting each other. But it's just like, once the session hits, it's very hard to get people's attention and time, right? And you have to be in this texting environment. And I just think if we could meet one on one, or or maybe the whole group wants to meet in person ahead of time, but that just hasn't been our practice. So Councilmember Lay.
Sorry about that. I I I think you're right, Mayor, in terms of wanting to have the face to face. It it's just infinitely better. Because they're always multitasking when they're doing these things and it's just, and it's, we only do this once a year. And I think the other part is it allows the council, it allows, in the past, it has allowed the council members to put their own gloss on certain points. And everybody has specific things that they're more interested in, less interested, whatever. And it it really is helpful. And I don't think I would do a delegation. I I I wonder, I mean, I, do you think that there would be pushback to getting together as we have in the past at the library?
I only anticipated pushback from this group. So we have, as a group, not been meeting in person as a matter of practice. So I would think if we were going to do that, we would need to come up with, you know, ground rules and guidelines to ensure that the event was, you know, a fully vaccinated event and it addressed all of the issues and concerns people have, because I don't think any of the things people have brought up have gone away. In fact, they've probably heightened as issues and concerns. So I just assumed this group would not be in favor of that format.
Maybe one way in, well, far be it for me to say, you know, if people wanted to do it that way, maybe they could, but I'm not sure, you know, I think we'd want everybody to have the same opportunity. So I or, but I think that, I think it would be better the the choice to to be able to come or not would be better than just having a couple of us go, I think. But that's just, that's my view. I'd rather do it in person.
Councilmember Fahey.
Yeah, I'm I'm kind of agreeing with Councilmember Lay that I I would prefer that we all get together. And if it has to be you know, in in one of the gymnasiums at the rec center or or open up the whole Brooks Cafe all the way back to the back of the building and and have the doors open. I think it could be done in a safe way. And it would be much more effective, I think, also if it was in person with everyone. My question then, though, is that makes it a public meeting. So then the public is also welcome to attend. So it would have to be a very large room, I think, in order to do it safely.
Right. So I think that the issue, I I I don't, I don't fully understand the concept of decision making because I don't fully understand how this is different than any of the other circumstances where we might want, like, I think this meeting tonight would have been more productive in person. And I wasn't afforded the option to attend this meeting in person if I wanted to, right? Like, we have decided as a group that we were going to go all or nothing. We weren't going to leave some people out in the cold. Like, that's what we've decided. So I guess I'm just struggling to understand the change in course for this one meeting. But I'm I'm just struggling with that. Councilmember Dickinson?
I still agree that it needs to be a unanimous decision by all the council members who are willing to meet in that way.
I I think, yes, I think this is maybe slightly different, Mayor, because what I would say is kind of to what Councilmember Lay was saying is I think this meeting should be held in person for the benefit of communicating with these, with these decision makers in an effective way. And so maybe that some of our council members aren't comfortable meeting and maybe that some of them aren't comfortable, but I think it's going to be a better result for the city of Louisville to meet with these decision makers in person. And so, for instance, if I were unwilling to be at that meeting, I still think my absence would, wouldn't be as big of an issue as the benefit of some of you attending. And to Chris's point, as opposed to saying like, oh, well, you know, Mayor, Mayor Proten, you guys go and we'll all stay back. It's, well, I, if I want to go, I should be able to go. It's like, anyone who wants to go should be able to go. But it is in the council meetings every week and there's a different power structure. And I I think this is more communicating from us to them. What we're looking for in those supports. And so I I think it's just a little bit different where I could get behind a an option to do it in person. And, you know, because I just don't, I think you're right, that I don't think it's very effective to have a meeting that's that big with that many people on Zoom. I don't think we'll get out of it what we're hoping to get out of it. So that, that, that's why I feel slightly different about it. I don't know if that's helpful at all.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Mayor Pratimani?
Yeah, I think informal, an informal face to face makes a lot of sense. You know, I think it needs to be something. If I'm going to go, it needs to be a fully vaccinated event. And just because of my, you know, personal circumstances, I'm not ready to to be in, you know, in public in a, in a big way. But I think this is important. You know, I I know, thinking back in the past, when we've done this and some of the informal discussions around some of the things, we were able to ask them what their bills were going to be and and have dialogue around that. Zoom really doesn't allow for that very well. So I I don't know if all of us would show up. To me, it would, it would depend on the nature of it. I mean, we do have some meetings coming up where we're going to be in City Hall making a decision about a city manager. I can't imagine doing that any other way. And this is a case as well. But when we have these meetings with, you know, I think today we might have had a few dozen public out there. I don't see that as a safe environment yet. And and when we've had these meetings in the past with the legislators, I, if we've had five public there, that would have been a lot.
So just to remind everybody, so if we do a fully vaccinated event, we'll have a video option for the public to be able to video in. It'll be a study session in the way that we don't take public comment necessarily. Although it's, we're fairly informal and we typically do allow the members that are there to participate. So that limits the areas that we can have it really to City Hall, to council chambers. And right now, we're not set up to do that in any way other than from the dais. So I guess I just would want to ask, you know, the city manager, I know, I don't know, was it four years ago, we had a a remote camera at the rec center for an airport meeting so that we could post that. Is that an option for us at all? Or is really the only place we can have a fully vaccinated event, council chambers?
You know, right, right now, we're really just set up in council chambers to have the ability for sort of the Zoom function where you could have the public. I know you said there wouldn't be public comment, but we could talk about it. If there isn't, if there isn't any public engagement piece, but just the public essentially could watch. So, you know, we can discuss it, but and see if we could do that at the library. I don't know if Meredith has any ideas. She's been looking into all the technology options.
Yeah, we used to be able to broadcast from the library. We haven't done it in a while. We'd have to check the viability of that equipment at this point. But again, it probably would depend on if you want to have it as a no public engagement versus with public engagement. We just have to evaluate, but our options would be.
Yeah, I obviously don't want to limit, you know, public inclusivity, but at these breakfast meetings, we typically have had, you know, a presentation of our agenda, no decision making, and then we ask questions of the legislators. It hasn't been a decision making meeting where we take input. So I I absolutely want the public to be able to have, you know, their full participation possible. But I think at this type of meeting, they don't usually have a speaking role. So I know we do need to decide this pretty well tonight, so staff can start working on this and get the invitations out and everything. So I guess I'm trying to think through how we can get to resolution on this at this point without having all the information known. It sounds like folks would like to do it in person as a fully vaccinated event, as our number one preference. So maybe we would give staff that direction. And if they investigate that and it just proves to either be there are all kinds of complications, right? Like the the video feed and all of the equity issues and ensuring that public participation is appropriate. And maybe our participants don't want to. So if that our number one council consensus position is an in-person event like we normally have done and invite our folks. And if that doesn't work, are people okay with approving a backup for staff to pursue tonight? And then what would that backup be? Councilmember Brown?
I I think the backup has to be a a virtual event. Maybe it's a virtual event that we do one on one with the, with each of our legislators. You know, different, like, you know, maybe you're setting up a couple of different meetings. But I don't. Or we, I mean, the other option, I suppose, is we just task you, Mayor, with going and delivering the message to our delegation.
Well, you know, you can't stop me from doing that anyway, but
Well, I know.
I think, I think having the seven, I think, I think there is power of having the whole delegation together because they play off of each other in a lot of ways. And then having our group together is powerful because we play off of each other in ways and can bring different points forward. So if if people are okay with the backup being the giant Zoom with all the members.
I'm okay with that.
I'm seeing some thumbs up and nods. Okay. So, um, city manager and Emily Hogan, does that sound like a good path forward? That it's clear what our preference is, but we understand that there are realities of COVID-19 that we have to be understandable and flexible for.
Yes. Yep. Well, we'll come up with some options within those kind of two areas with the preference being some type of in-person fully vaccinated, if we can figure out how to make that work.
Okay, great. Um, and so I believe that's all you need from us on the legislative agenda. Is that correct?
That is, and I will bring back, um, a revised copy on December 7th for approval.
Thank you very much. And so next is council committee assignments for the next two years. And so I'm very excited that we have a new council. And I worked with Mayor Pro Tem Maloney on these, this list and, and all, and all of you have, in some fashion about these different committee assignments. Um, so I just want to start by saying I tried really hard to balance people's priorities and make sure that there's good mixes of.
There, I'm sorry, I think you skipped over the mayor pro temp election.
That I did. Sorry about that. Thank you. Uh, remember Dickinson, was that your same point? Sorry.
Uh, I, I, I had two point, yes, and also, um. We, we don't normally do two-year appointments. Is that correct? Or? I feel like we only do one year.
We normally do. Councilmember Brown screwed everything up. Yeah, I'll, I'll explain it. When we get to that topic, I'll explain what happened and how it normally works, but we can do it however we want as a group. So I apologize for skipping ahead. I got ahead of us. So next on the agenda is the election of Mayor Pro Tem. So, um, because we had council elections, um. When we have two new folks, we'll elect a mayor pro temp. Typically what the council has done is elect a pro temp for two-year period of time. And so at this point, I don't believe there's a staff presentation. I believe it's to work amongst ourselves to elect a mayor pro temp. And so Councilmember Lay?
Yes, I would like to nominate the mayor pretend to be the mayor pro temp. For this coming year.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Well, I was going to nominate, I was going to nominate, uh, Councilmember Maloney to be the next. The current and next mayor pro temp, but I guess Councilmember Lay beat me to it. So. Anyway, I think it would be great. I think it would be great if he could continue. I think he's done an excellent job. Um, and we really, um. Appreciate his voice. It would be, uh, um, I, I would, I would really appreciate him being able to continue, um, in that role. So.
Any other folks? Well, I guess Mayor Pro Tem Maloney, would you accept the nomination if they're putting your name out there?
I'm honored to accept the nomination.
Any other folks want to be considered? I just would like to say I really appreciate working with Mayor Pro Tem Maloney. We have our meetings with the city manager and. A lot of times in the middle of the day, on short notice, we'll have to put a meeting together and I, I, I appreciate how, uh, he makes himself available for the community. And, um. Couldn't do it without you. So I think this is a great nomination. Any other discussion? So Councilmember Lay, you just want to make it for us in a motion since we act on motions and then we'll vote on it.
Yes, I, um, move. That. Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, Maloney be elected by acclamation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I got.
All right, all of us in favor? Oh, Councilmember Dickinson?
I was going to offer a friendly amendment.
All right.
I'm just, I'm just kidding. Just for like twenty-three months. No, kidding.
All right, all in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Well, I just, uh, appreciate the confidence and I will support the mayor to the best of my ability. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Now that takes us to our next order of business, which is council committee assignments. Um, so normally, um, in the past, these have been just two-year committee assignments, but we had Councilmember Brown that was appointed. So they were one-year committee assignments. And then when he was elected, there was a new year of committee assignments. Cause theoretically it could have been someone else. And now we, so each election, we typically do. Committee assignments. So if there were, let's say a vacancy in the, you know, coming year, if one of us moves, whatever happens. And it creates a vacancy, then you could foresee that we would create new committees in the following year. But. The plan at the moment is that these will be two-year committee assignments. And in the past, um, council members, you know, have tired of a committee assignment. Maybe their life circumstance changed that they can't attend a meeting at a certain time. And we've been able to accommodate changes to them. So this, even though these are two-year committee assignments, that doesn't mean we're getting out the stone and hatching things in or anything like that. So we can always make changes as a body as we see fit. Um, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney helped me think through some of these things and really working through teams and getting people, uh, even balance of committee assignments and. Um, committee assignments that meet your, all of your interests. So first I just want to say that the utility committee functions are being rolled into the finance committee for this period. It's a two-year budget cycle. And so there's a lot of overlap of those committees anyway. And so the finance, having it all be in one committee. So there's. Confusion about who's doing what and who's responsible for what. Should clarify some of the issues that we've had. And, um, so the finance committee will be chaired by, um, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney with Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Lay serving with him. And the economic vitality committee will be chaired by Councilmember Dickinson with Councilmember Most and Councilmember Fahy. So the thinking there was those two committees have a tremendous amount of work to be doing in the next two years. So each council member will find themselves on one of those two committees. And I really appreciate all the work that you're going to put in. And you see that I am on either committee. So I am very grateful of all the work you're going to be putting in on those committees. Thank you. And then, um, the consortium of cities, if we could have Councilmember Brown continue as the primary member with Councilmember Dickinson as the alternate. And then the airport roundtable, we had Councilmember Brown as the alternate will move him up into the member with, um, Councilmember Most as the alternate. And I would like to continue to be on Denver Regional Council of Governments with Councilmember Brown as my alternate. Commuting Solutions, if we could have Councilmember Fahy be the primary member with Councilmember Lay as the alternate. Councilmember Fahy will continue on, uh, Colorado Communities for Climate Action. The Downtown Business Association Street Fair Committee will be Mayor Pro Tem Maloney. The Impact Fee Committee will be Mayor Pro Tem Maloney and Councilmember Most. The Joint Interest Committee will be led by Councilmember Dickinson with the help of Councilmember Brown. And the Revitalization Commission will be Councilmember Lay. So I will send those all to you. So in case I read too fast or, you know, maybe it was tongue tied when I was reading them, um, but those are the committee assignments for the coming year. And I just. I, I don't know that all the members of the community realize how much time and effort, um, all of the council members put into the committees and ensuring that things are studied and. There's additional input from different community members. And so I'm very grateful for all the extra work that everyone puts in. And I think that we see the fruits of those labors at council meetings because of all the heavy lifting that's done. So I look forward to seeing all of that hard work.
Uh, Mayor, did you mention the Revitalization Commission?
I meant to, so, um, if I didn't, that count, the Revitalization Commission will continue as Councilmember Lay. He's done a great job there for us. Did I skip that one?
No, you got it. What was after CC4CA? It went, it went Community Solutions. It went Community Solutions, CC4CA, and then Maloney was.
Street Fair.
Street Fair, thanks.
And so if the music is bad, we know who to blame.
Oh, well, it's gonna be bad then.
Oh, no. I will, I will send this out to the, to, um, the city clerk and she'll make sure everybody gets a copy of it, including the public.
So I, I have a question on the, the, uh, group that. Does the relationship between Superior and Lafayette and Elizabeth? Which one was that?
So I, so I didn't list it twice. So I called it joint interest. So, um, Councilmember Dickinson and Councilmember Brown are going to take care of our joint interests between the communities surround us. And so. Their responsibility includes Lafayette and Superior and Greenfield if they should see fit and Boulder if they should see fit as opportunities and issues arise. Uh, but in the past, we've named those as separate committees and I just consolidated it into. As joint, as there are joint interests, those folks will make sure that they set up meetings with the appropriate council members. And I've gotten feedback from our peer communities, uh, that have interacted with them on the intergovernmental different assignments. And I think they've done just a, an excellent job. Representing our group and making us seem even better than we are. So I thought we should have them carry on. Any other questions? All right. Now get to work. Just kidding. All right. So thank you all very much. And I look, I look forward to seeing all of that great work. Um, next on the agenda is the city attorney's report.
I have no report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. Any council comments, committee reports, or identification of future gen items? Councilmember Dickinson?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, let people know that the EVC meeting regularly scheduled for. The 19th has been moved up to the 18th. And then I have a, just a question for clarification. Mayor, we set that time. Because the three members who are on it could make that adjustment. Should Fahy and Most be attending that meeting in two days?
Um, yes, I mean, but you may need to change the meeting time. I don't know what their schedules are like.
Okay. Well, so, so for Devon Maxine, we were scheduled to meet Thursday, the 18th. At nine AM or eight thirty, I think it's nine AM. Um, so.
And do that.
Maxine, do you know if you can do Thursday at nine AM?
Sorry, yes, I can.
Okay. So Mayor, would you like to make that, obviously, that adjustment happens for, for two days from now, right?
That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a Zoom meeting too?
It is.
Okay.
Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I just wanted to report on, uh, LRC. Because number one, I think, um, there is a strong sense among the LRC members that they would. Like to pursue some alternatives. To. Funding of infrastructure. In the wake of the defeat of. Two A, so, um, they really would like to get together, uh, as a joint meeting, uh, with us. After we have had a chance to address some of those issues. I've encouraged them to. You know, to keep an eye on what we're doing generally, but I do think that that would be a really good thing. One of the things that came up. Um, as we were talking about, now wearing my LRC hat for a second. Uh, about what our work plan looks like and what things we might be interested in doing on the LRC. And I, I think wise, wisely and appropriately. The. Megan Pierce, Director Pierce. Um, raised the question of just bandwidth. That there, uh, the LRC pays for only a certain amount of her time. And, uh, it may be. There may be some interest in actually creating a staff member. Position. For a little bit more than the, the time that. Megan Pierce serves. So we'll, we'll have to, you know, without, that'll become flushed out over time for, and there's a lot of. I'm sure plenty of people have thoughts about that, but, um, I thought it, you know, it's an interesting idea. And, uh, and it may be useful and it may be. A better thing for both council and, you know, for the city and the LRC to be doing. To be able to do more together. But I think there's a very strong sense and since, um, Councilmember Most is brand new. Um, it hasn't always been this way, but the LRC is very interested in, in cooperating and. Building some synergy and being somewhat. Coordinated at least with some of the things that council, uh, is doing so that we're not tripping over. One another. And. And so we can make the, the funds that are available, do what needs to happen, whether that's remaining in the bank. Or to be used for other activities. So anyway, just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, uh, and, you know, well. I, I think the, the final thing is that there, there have been. A number of times during the last year when I've been on the LRC where there's been an interest in doing fairly. I would say discreet, or you might say not particularly transformative projects. On LRC and some of them are, are great. The question sometimes can be said, you know, is that something that? The council ought to be doing or whatnot. I think. Having EVC and since we're changing up the EVC is a good time to think about this. Uh, I think the EVC would do well to. You know, to, to get on the agenda of one of the LRC meetings and explain, you know, introduce. And explain what the agenda for the, for the, uh, EVC is this year, ways to partner or not. And. Uh, because I think there's a lack of understanding. I, you know, I, I'm doing some of the education of different people, but I think it is worthwhile. To get, keep everybody jazzed up about. What we can all do to make those feel better. So.
I think it's a great idea, Chris. I'm with you a hundred percent. I, there's, you know, we need synergy. We need more connectedness. We need to stop. Siloing our, you know, how we're addressing issues and problems and challenges in this community. So I think it's a great idea.
Councilmember Lane, Councilmember Most, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
I, I think the Meredith had her hand up before me.
Let's see. Sorry about that. So you know, sometimes I look at different things. Um, city clerk, yes?
Uh, this was just for the very end. I wanted to ask you all, um, to please be here, um. On Friday, no later than eight, three AM. Maybe even eight fifty.
So we'll all be, um, to City Hall by eight thirty on Friday. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Uh, yeah. So th- this is related to the, uh, the interviews for the, the city manager. Uh, in prep of that, we've been editing some questions that you'll get and Meredith can probably tell us when those will be sent out, but. Um, just some sample questions. And as, as an example, um. Counselor Brown and I are meeting on Thursday. We're going to go over and come up with those definitive questions that we're going to ask each of the candidates. So we're basically asking. All the candidates the same questions. And we'll be using that list that, you know, developed by our consultant. So that'll be sent out, um. You can help me out with this, Meredith, probably tomorrow.
Yeah, I think do that tomorrow. No problem.
Yeah. So, um, just so you know, if you want to get together and prep. Um, or coordinate for each of your wards, you'll have some information to work from. So just thought that you, you don't need to ask all twenty-three questions. So figure out what makes the most sense to you and your ward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney. And on that same note, if everyone could please, um. Get the information out to your, you know, neighbors, friends, community members, your circles of people. To please attend the city manager interview on Thursday night. And if they can't, to watch the videos online. And read the resumes online and provide us feedback. Um, the more community members that know about this, the better. Councilmember Fahy?
Yes, um, I'm going to bu- build on that. I'm wondering, do we come up with our own list of questions so that each ward is asking the applicants different questions? Um, now I know that we ask the same question of each applicant, but do I, do we have to ask the same questions as Ward Three, for example?
So you don't have to, Councilmember Fahy, but you could. I mean, sometimes two people asking the same question do a little bit of different response. So I think you, you and, um, Councilmember Most will be meeting together. So you guys should coordinate your questions, um, and just make sure that they are appropriate for the period of time that you have. And then the whole council will get together and we'll discuss the responses we heard and how we took those. And, you know, I may have questions about. Things that you all didn't think to ask. And the, I might say, well, this was really impactful to me. And you guys will say, well, why did you ask that question? So that'll be the fun is sharing with each other our perspectives and what we heard and how it influenced our decision making.
Okay. And then the other thing I want to report on was CC4CA. Uh, we did have our annual retreat. That was virtual. Um, it was fine. annual retreat that was virtual. Um, it was fine. It, a- again, like meeting with the legislators, it would have been much better if it was in person. Um, we also had our last policy committee meeting where we kind of refined a lot of the issues in the policy statement. And I wanted to let everyone know that Superior is one of our newest members of CC four CA now. So we're, we've now reached forty communities that are participating in this. Right. And so we're, we're moving along and we'll be uh, starting to go, well, hopefully go down to the Capitol if not at least sending emails or letters. So, thank you.
Councilmember Fahy, Councilmember Most?
Okay, just for clarification, um, uh, are, can we ask our own questions? Or do we have to ask questions that these, that the consultants have come up with?
You can ask your own questions. If you have questions about the process, you can um, talk to, talk in through any decision points with Mayor Pro Tem Maloney or the, the attorney. Like if you're, you, you should obviously, yeah, I mean, I think all of us have the wherewithal around like the types of things that are inappropriate to ask in an interview. But if you have questions about the appropriateness of your questions, you can send them to the city attorney or councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem Maloney to review. Like, I mean, there are certain things, obviously, that.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Mayor, um, the, the idea behind the consultant providing the questions is just to jumpstart your thinking about sort of the broad questions you can ask. And you know, in Ward Two, you may have a lot of interest in open space or trails or whatever it might be. Focus those where they make the most sense for, for you and for Counselor Fahy.
Well, and, and just to add in, I mean, really make sure you watch all the videos and read all the responses that have already been given and build upon that. Like we already have so much information that has been gathered for us by the subcommittee and the consultant.
Right, thank you.
Um, any other questions that people think of about the city manager hiring process through the week? Please do contact Mayor Pro Tem Maloney. And then he can make sure that the consultant or whoever can answer the question for you. All right. Any other committee reports or identification of future agenda items? Seeing them, we're returned. Thank you, everyone.